Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us today. Excuse me. Today, our invocation will be given by firefighter Chris DeLeon. Chris?
Dear Lord, we thank you for letting us be here today. We thank you for our council. We thank you for our city manager and our city leaders who make the decisions that guide this city. We thank you for another day. Let's have a good meeting. And we thank you for our chief, Chief Rocha. And may you guide this meeting. In your name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. And our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be given by our very own Director of Communications, Logan Cobb.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, the state, indivisible.
Thank you, Logan. And welcome, Logan. Well, we're gonna hear from Logan, right? Yeah, that was impromptu. Thank you, Logan. Yes, yes, yes. Ms. Marta, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Wahaglo.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barreira.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter is absent. Billy Lerma.
Here.
John Martinez. Ben Molina.
Present.
Mike Pasley. Greg Smith.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
Senior Assistant City Attorney Buck Bryce. Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Marta.
Okay, City Manager Peter Zanoni, your update on city operations?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council. This is our first opportunity as a group to talk about the success of our bond program. So I want to begin with that today in my city manager's report. And talk about the Bond 2022, not only the success that the voters gave themselves, but talk to the community about the implementation strategy for the bond program. So as we know, the midterm elections were completed last Tuesday, November 8th, and in the ballot, residents voted for four propositions in Bond 2022. Ultimately, the voters approved all four propositions in the bond program for streets, parks, public safety, and one proposition for the library, La Rataima Library. So this year's program promises to deliver 125 million worth of improvements citywide in 32 projects, including streets, parks, public safety, and our library project. Proposition A, which was streets, was approved by 67%. And so that's a pretty strong approval rating. That is 75% of the bond program, or $92.5 million for streets. Proposition B was for parks. That had a 62% approval rating and $20 million of park improvements. Proposition C was public safety. That was our biggest supported proposition, 74% approval rating. And then Proposition D, La Rataima Library, just missed that 60% mark at 59%, and that's 2.5 million for improvements at our central or La Rataima Library. You can see the totals here on this chart, the number of projects by proposition, and the dollars allocated to each as well. So as a reminder, and I was talking to Councilman Lerma about this this morning, this property, this bond program can be carried out with no property tax rate increase. So we can do it within our existing projected revenues from a portion of the property tax revenues that we receive. So some key highlights, there's a, as I mentioned, 30 some odd projects, but some of the key highlights by district and city council District 1. Significant improvements on North Beach, including Surfside Street Reconstruction, 1.6 million. Design work for the North Beach Eco Park Project. McCambell Reconstruction, that'll support the HEB Bakery, one of a very big employer in our community, $7 million for that street reconstruction. La Bonti Park Expansion, 1.5 million for that significant regional park. It'll be over 80 acres when we join those two parcels. And then public safety improvements, land acquisition and design for Cal Allen Police Substation. And then La Rataima Library resides in City Council District 1. In City Council District 2, we know that Alameda Street is one of those major corridors that needs significant reconstruction. So Airline to Eberhart, that significant stretch that passes a school and numerous commercial businesses, 13.3 million. And then we'll do design work on Alameda from Texan to Dodd Bridge, $2 million for that project. Another regional park has 1.1 million, Coal Park, to continue the investments that the city council has made there. And then Fire Station Number 8, land acquisition and design for that project, $2 million. And then City Council District 3, Councilman Barrera's district, Carroll Road Reconstruction, 5.1 million. Significant investment, finally, in our community's sports facility, so Greenwood City Sports Complex, improving three types of ball fields there, at $4.7 million. And then Fire Station 10 Replacement, that is on Horn. We were just there a few weeks ago, visiting with the firefighters. It's a very dated and old fire station, so $2 million for that fire station. Also, a resource center in City Council District 3 to improve the fitness and wellness of our firefighters is in the bond program. And then City Council District 4, two significant projects in Flower Bluff, Councilman Smith's district, so Flower Bluff Drainage Improvements. Flower Bluff roadway improvements and drainage, $14 million. Flower Bluff Drive is what that is. And then the significant outdoor venue, the Flower Bluff Holly Road Railroad Trestle and to Trails Project, $500,000 contribution to that. We know the fundraising as well. And then we have Holly Road Design, that is from various limits, but 1.2 million there. Beach Access Road Reconstruction on the island, that project is in design right now because of the 2020 Bond Program, and this will fund the construction at 4.4 million. And then there are very few built-out parks on the island, and so Commodore Park Design and a potential community center. We will have significant community engagement, Councilman Smith, before we do anything there, but that $1 million will be part of that initial design, planning, and development for that significant parcel there that was donated to the city many, many years ago, but has really not been developed yet at this point. So City Council District 5, one of our fastest-growing districts, Oso Yorktown, I mean, very significant project, right north, I guess, north of the Oso Creek, Rod Field to Oso Bridge. Reconstruction of that road from a two-lane to a four-lane with turning lanes as well. That is also in design right now in our 2020 Bond Program, 90% complete because of the new council-approved process. So by the end of the year, we'll be ready to put this out to bid for construction. And then Timmergate Reconstruction, another project. The Bill Witt Pool, this is another significant quality-of-life enhancement for the community. The first in many years, probably decades, pool aquatic center that'll be built, the first in City Council District 5, $10 million. It's 100% designed at this point, Councilman Hernandez and community. Also, St. Dennis Park in the King's Crossing area. And then Far South Police Substation as well, similar as the other one, which is a design and land acquisition. So because of our new business practices, staff has provided in the 2020 Bond Program a record delivery of bond programs. And that process exists in the 2022 Bond Program as well. That includes having better project scopes when these projects are put out to the voters, the more defined. We have a new process to award design consultants for all projects at one time rather than over the years, as has been done in the past. And then we have more project management and oversight during the delivery of the program. So staff issued a mass selection for this bond program even before the voters considered it. We wanted to get the process moving in the event the voters would have approved it. And so that mass selection RFQ was issued for all street projects on October 17th. And all the proposals are due by December 7th. So we're already ahead of the game. We anticipated that the voters might approve at least the streets. They approved all four. So for the streets portion of the bond program, we had already put out to the engineering community requests for proposals on designing that $92.5 million of street projects. So similar to the 2020 program, we expect to be to City Council in March of 2023 with recommendations on engineering firms that would be best qualified for each of those street projects with a mass selection recommendation to City Council. So that's some good news and kind of a celebration and just an official statement that we're excited that the voters approved another bond program for this community that betters our streets and also makes significant investments in what are important quality-of-life initiatives in our community. Just as a reminder, real quick here, for the 2020 Bond Program, that was also overwhelmingly approved by voters two years ago, 70% overall approval rating. There were 42 projects in that program for streets, parks, and public safety. This bond program is fast progressing because of new business processes here at City Hall. 19 projects are scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. So less than two years since the voters approved it, projects, 19 projects will be completed by the end of this year. Two projects are in construction, are ready. 18 projects are scheduled to be in construction by May of next year, early spring. And then we're working with TechDOT on three projects. We're still some penning, some coordination there. So these next couple of slides shows you the detail. 16 park and public safety projects are scheduled to be completed by the end of 2022. If we can advance, there we go. This is a list of them, maybe a little hard to see for the general audience. The three green projects that are highlighted, highlighted, the three rows, those are already completed. So that includes our donation to the Texas State Aquarium and their build, and we'll hear from them later today. As I mentioned, the Bill Witt Pool Aquatic Center is already 100% designed, and the Police Training Academy, 100% designed, and almost ready for construction. So we have street projects are ready, have already entered into construction or will be on this next slide. Two projects, let's move on to the next one. Those two projects, these projects here, 18 will go into construction by 2023, meaning that they're already almost all designed, and we will be awarding construction contracts to our partners in the community and bringing those to council over the next several months. And then we have 18 public safety, okay, that was it there. And then finally, these three projects here, unfortunately, they're all in City Council District 4, but we're working with TechDOT to make sure some of the issues are ironed out so we can advance on them. And we'll provide you updates on that as we move forward. So that's a quick update on the 2020 Bond Program. We know we still have some projects in the 2018 Bond Program, and those are advancing as well. So our goal is two- to four-year delivery timeframe, some of these longer lead, like an Alameda Street, obviously takes a couple of years for construction. But the key is getting them all activated into design, and we'll do the same process that we did in 2020 with the 2022 Bond Program, with city council endorsement, obviously, in early spring. So Mayor, unless there's any comments on that, we have some staff.
Councilman Pasley, give a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, during the election process, one of the news media outlets put out a breakdown of our bond package. And at the end of that breakdown, and it was mainly dealing with streets, they put a statement on their news piece that said the majority of the money for the bond package was going to be spent on the south side of Corpus Christi. So I don't know about Councilman Lerma, but my email and phone started blowing up immediately from people who live in the northwest area of this city stating, well, why are y'all doing this to us once again? You're spending all the money on the south side. And I know during the budget process, we talked about and made certain, and you made certain, that the project was being divided up, or that money was being divided up evenly across the city and the districts. So one of the things that, it sounds like I'm in the bottom of a well. One of the things that you and I have discussed is, number one, I don't feel like that the city does an adequate job of talking about the things that we do really well. And I think our new communications manager is sitting on the front row this morning, and hopefully we'll start turning that around because people need to know the things that we're doing. But I think it's very important for us to get out the word very accurately about where this bond money is gonna go, how it's gonna be spent, and make sure that everybody understands that it's not just being allocated for one part of this city. And so I hope we did. One of the things that I've started using quite a bit is the Infrastructure Management Plan Mapping System. And to the IT department's credit, they actually made an improvement to that that I recommended. And that is if you type in a street name now on the map, it will actually, like Google Earth, zoom down to that street so you can see it. But the Infrastructure Management Plan does not include the streets that are under bond packages for improvement. So we need something in our mapping system that we can put on our website where people can go look at the streets and the roads and arterials and collectors that are gonna be improved through bond packages. Because we don't have that listed currently.
Right, yes, Councilman, you and I talked about that. So we're having IT develop that so that it can combine the two into one, you're right. And just as a follow-up, so this bond program had some guiding principles that City Council approved to include, as an example, project continuation. Others were leveraging funds if we could leverage from other folks. But one of the important guiding principles was rough proportionality. That meant that roughly every side of the city got the same amount of bond funding, and that is true. We can clearly communicate that and show that to the community. So it wasn't necessarily a divide by 10, a divide by five, because some districts, like District 5, wanted more investment in park facilities. But roughly every city council district got the same amount of funding from the bond program in all five districts.
And I know we discussed that. The problem is, we don't get that out effectively, I don't think.
Right, yeah, so we did have in our brochure a map that clearly shows that.
When the media publishes a story like that, we need to follow up with them and say, okay, this is not quite correct. And they put a statement on there that the majority of the money on our bond package is gonna be spent in one area of the town. It's just not correct.
We agree, Councilman. So that's why we do have a new communications director, and we're looking at how we communicate and brand ourselves as well, and Logan will talk to us today.
And I know you and your staff, since you came here, have done a number of things to speed up the bond packages and make sure we're getting those done. And that's something else we need to clearly communicate to the public, because one of the overriding comments that I received during the election process was the city just doesn't get things done fast enough. And so we need to, you know, toot our horn when it's, you know, appropriate, that, yeah, we are getting some of these things done in a quicker manner than they were in the past. So just some points.
Yeah, that's real good. We're fully aware of that, Councilman. I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Peter, I'm gonna add, I think what, you know, that equals to is having a bond campaign. We talked about this also, because when we're scrambling, I'm trying to make a flyer that shows, no, this part of town has received this much. One person shouldn't, on this council, you know, mayor or not, have to do that. We should be, as the councilman said, during the year, we should always, and that's gonna be one of my focuses moving forward. Every district and every councilman should also know and be proactively talking to their districts and saying, here is what we've invested so far. Here is what, every quarter, however y'all want to do it, but it is incumbent on all of us as district council members to get that information out. However, I think our communications department, that it lies on them to make sure citywide that the people of Corpus Christi know and understand where these bond dollars, where they're going, what they're going towards. That's why you have a councilperson to go to them and say, hey, wait a minute, I don't necessarily agree with this many dollars going towards maybe this initiative, whatever it may be. Your voice has to be heard. And so I think we can always do a better job at that, but absolutely, I think at the end of the day, it's a campaign. And I mean, you're very used to those coming from San Antonio, but I think we need to do them regardless of, you know, what we think would happen.
Right, yeah, we agree. Yeah, for the next one, for sure, on that one.
Mayor, you know, back several months ago, you had indicated that you were gonna go on kind of a roadshow in each one of the council districts, talking about the things that we're doing. And that sort of got sidetracked because of COVID, and I think after the first year, that might be something we want to revisit.
Right, yeah, we will. We'll get it back going. Thank you.
Mayor, we have some staff announcements, but I'm not sure if you want to, you want to continue, or did you want a break for the residents, the citizens to be here?
Well, we have five minutes, and I think, Rebecca, do you prefer we wait? Or he can go on for five more minutes for public comment, or start early? Is that okay? Okay, we can go and start early so we don't interrupt.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, great.
Okay. Let's see, so that would be item F is where we're going, public comment. So before we begin, I'll ask City Attorney Buck Bryce to please recite the Council Rules of Decor.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of the council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce. So individuals will be called upon in the order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents, and for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that there is a recording being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium, state your name and address before beginning your comments. And there are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item. The first is at the present time, and the second is at the time in which we actually hear the item. So please choose one before coming forth. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once the timer goes off, we would appreciate you wrapping up your comments. And if you have a petition or any information regarding your subject matter, if you'll please give it to our city secretary prior to beginning, and she can distribute it to us. So with that, we will start with Adam Rios. And second, we have Alyssa Bonetta Mason, if you can come up, and John Weber.
Good morning, council. No skateboard today?
Yeah.
Everybody was shocked about that. I got a tie and everything. My wife made me do this today.
Who was that? Good-looking, handsome stranger?
She told me to clean up. It's a different version of me. Anyway, I know, haven't seen y'all since, or some of y'all since the opening of the skate park, which, if you've been driving by, you can see the kids there on a daily basis, taking advantage of it, enjoying it, staying out of trouble, everything that we were all hoping would happen with the reopening of that. I'm excited to be working now with Parks and Rec Director Robert Dodd. We've talked about. We've talked about the second park and possibly a third park, skate park. And I know that I heard Bill Witt mentioned earlier on the bond agendas, and we've talked about a BMX park, you know, so you might be seeing me bring my BMX bike in next time I'm here. But aside from all that, I'm really here for a very selfish reason. I'm here to promote my wife, Cheryl Vazmyar Rios, who just accepted the position for positive action towards cultural heritage. She will be the executive director of it, and one of her responsibilities, obviously, is going to be the restoration of the Ritz. We are holding a reception today at 5:30. This is going to sound like a commercial, I apologize. We're holding a reception today at 5:30. You know how hard she works, you know how hard I work in the community to try and promote things. And I really think with her accepting the position, the positive feedback that we've gotten, we're really going to finally, I think, see the Ritz become revitalized and back to the shape that it was in when it was formed in 1929. I was talking with my dad about it, and one of the last times he remembered being in there was 1965, and it was a movie called Cat Ballou. And, yeah, and he was thirty, it was thirty-five cents, and he paid thirty-five cents. And one of the reasons he remembered it more than anything else was because he was on leave. You know, he was serving in our United States military and was about to get shipped off to Vietnam again. And so for a brief moment, he got to see that part of Corpus Christi. And we're just excited about her taking the position and moving forward. And hopefully, by this time next year, we'll be able to all celebrate that together as a community because you know how I am. I like to involve the community in everything that we do. So that's really why I was here today. So thank you all for your time.
Adam, thank you. We wish her the best and thank her.
Absolutely.
Super excited about that. Alyssa Badada Mason?
Good afternoon, morning, Mayor and Council. Alyssa Badada Mason, Executive Director of the Downtown Management District, 609 Pearman Place. Your second commercial as an update today is going to be our downtown holiday series. We have announced this on our social media channels and our website. We have some hard copies of these events, kind of flyers in the back of the room here. But just to kind of go over at a high level, the Downtown Management District spends a lot of time and energy, really bringing a lot of light and activity to the downtown for the holiday time. We know that that was really a time when downtown was alive and vibrant, and we kind of grew up on pictures of things like that, including Peppermint Lane, which we have recreated. So just to kind of go over at a high level, we have Peppermint Lane that is up and decorated in downtown. We have the Port of Corpus Christi Holiday Tree in La Rotama Park, which is a wonderful 18-foot Christmas tree. So you can go down there and start taking pictures with your family and start getting your Christmas cards ready. We'll then have the 60-foot HEB Christmas tree in Waters Edge Park that is under construction as we speak, as well as some new holiday wayfinding and new lighting in Artesian Park as well. So we've created a multi-color kind of winter wonderland in Artesian Park. Events related to the holidays, we've just had Deck Downtown, which is a 25-year volunteer tradition. This year, it was sponsored by NEC Co-op Energy, which is a wonderful, which is a wonderful time. The HEB tree lighting will be on November 26th. The Mayor's Marius Downtown Decorated Contest presented by the AEP Foundation will be on December 2nd. This is a time that all the downtown businesses are invited to decorate their storefronts, and they compete for people's choice in cash prizes. We'll have a special judging, and that'll be also on the night of the Holiday Art Walk. So it'll be a really festive time on December 2nd. And then December 3rd will be the Illuminated Boat Parade presented by the Port of Corpus Christi. We'll have online voting for all of those contests, so please follow us on social media in order to participate. And then I just wanted to say a special thank you to the mayor, the city team. We get a lot of support from Parks and Rec, PD, Traffic Engineering, the Marina, pretty much every department you can think of helps us in some way. So I just wanted to say a special thank you and give them recognition, as well as my team and our board. We also have a lot of private sector support. So in addition to the people that I've mentioned, our advisory council includes Valero, Arsler Mittel, Sitgo, Frost, and American Bank, and all of them help give us some funds that we then get to utilize in putting up these decorations. So we hope to see all of you out, and we wanted to invite the community and say thank you for your support.
Thank you, Alyssa. John Weber?
Hi, John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. On March 29th, we all heard Bootstrap Energy's mining proposal as presented by Andrea Gardner and Ian Vacy, who both no longer, no longer are at their positions. Interesting, Andrea retired only after nine months with the city. A billion-dollar deal, $5 million a year to the city, $1.2 million to the county. It was approved unanimously. On April 12th, after several citizens commented on what a bad deal it was, and I emailed each one of you facts regarding cryptocurrencies backed up by expert sources, and the council approved it with only Councilman Lerma voting no, ooh-rah. Phase one was to be completed in October. Phase two was to be completed in December. It is now November 15th. There are two large transformers and a couple of temporary office buildings at the site. Nothing has changed since midsummer. Zero jobs have been created. Bootstrap's template websites still list no completed projects and not even a phone number. You all approved it, so I think you would agree it's only fair for you to clean it up before the new council is sworn in. Andrea assured me the city had strong clawbacks in case the company didn't meet their timelines. She said the company signed a petition for the city to re-annex both properties, not just the one you de-annex, but both properties, if Bootstrap didn't meet its deadlines. As you know, the end of March, Bitcoin was $47,000, and today it just barely hit $17,000. I hope none of you put any money into cryptocurrencies, or you lost, likely lost two-thirds of all your money, or all of it. As I pointed out before, crypto has no earnings, pays no dividends, and has no intrinsic value. If you do any financial modelings, you always come up with the value as zero. So please clean up this mess and get the city's land back, and start listening to the citizens and not to the scammers. Every day miners are going bankrupt, and people are losing their money, their savings on crypto scams. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our in-person. Do we have Shireen?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, she's a WebEx, so. Ms. Del Souce, are you online?
Hi, Shireen Del Souce, 603 Tavish Street. Let's play video. Corpus Christi needs dedicated bike paths in our parks. Let's start with one. Currently, we have none. I don't really count the one by the ocean because there is no indication that it's for cyclists. The path is typically used by pedestrians. This is the way you clearly indicate that a path is for cyclists.
I'm here at Old Port where there is a bike path that's separate from where the pedestrians are, and then there's a lot of people who stop for the restaurants and cafes, and the cyclists get to stop here as well. So when you have cyclists and pedestrians and all these other methods of transportation, you bring more people in, more methods of transportation that's efficient, effective, and that's more business for the local economy. Sadly, I don't count the bike path by the Joe Fulton Corridor. I mean, it was such a beautiful idea, having a bike path so close to the water, but sadly it crumbled into the water recently, and it was closed off. So I have no idea when or if it will be repaired. So now we're at square zero. By the way, white sidewalks don't count for me. Pedestrians shouldn't be in the same place where cyclists ride. Pedestrians walk three miles an hour. Bikes typically ride 15 miles an hour, so that's a big difference. It's really dangerous. So enough of these hike and bike trails. They're a joke. There's no way my family with my kid in a trailer would be able to ride in these so-called hike and bike trails. So here's an example of how other cities have done it. This is a beach in California. This is one in Toronto. And this is a park in Montreal. It can be done there, so why can't it be done here? The demand is there. One in three Americans own a bike. That's like 100,000 people in Corpus Christi, and we can't have one single dedicated bike path here in our parks. When working on future park projects, consider adding clearly marked dedicated bike paths. And for more information about this petition and what I've been doing, check out ibikecc.com.
I just want to quickly add that 22% of Americans do not own a car, so the streets being worked on with a bond need to represent that reality. And transportation should be for everybody and should be safe. We need protected bike paths. And I did this comment today because of item 221822, guarding the Oso Bay Bike and Bike Trail. So please refer to the examples provided. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Del Souce. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Mayor, could I ask that if Rebecca and her staff could, were appropriate to include this holiday series schedule as calendar invites to the council, please?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Zanoni, we will, that concludes our public comment, and we will go back to your comments.
Great, so we have a couple of staff announcements we'd like to make, Mayor, next up on the agenda. And the first is a continuation of yesterday where we introduced Ernesto Delagazza, our new Public Works Director. In case some of the community missed it, we thought it'd be important to bring him back today. So Ernesto, who's going to join us in a moment here at the podium, has 20 years of street and bridge construction and transportation engineering in his background, 14 of which, 14 of those 20 years was with TechDOT, where he led some significant teams of people and projects across the state of Texas. Most recently, he was with TechDOT as the Contract Claim Section Lead. Ernesto was responsible for 25 TechDOT districts across 10 counties in Texas and oversaw over 400 different employees. So his work with TechDOT included the management of over 100 contracts with a value of over 200 million. He did work on Interstate Highway 37. He resolved high-profile projects to completion. He also led TechDOT's Mission Zero Safety Initiative. And Ernesto also, in his spare time, taught, and still does, at Texas A&amp;M University in Kingsville. He teaches graduate and undergraduate courses in civil engineering. He's been doing that for over 10 years. So simply put, Ernesto knows streets. He knows design, he knows pavement management, he knows how to lead people, he knows how to engineer and build streets, and that's why we selected him to be the Public Works Director. In this capacity, he will be responsible for the city's streets, its sidewalks, its traffic signals, its signs, as we said yesterday, pretty much everything in between the two sidewalks and the street. That's Ernesto's job, leading his team of close to 300 individuals. Ernesto's schooling includes a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering, and he also has a Master's in Civil Engineering, both from Texas A&amp;M in Kingsville. And he is a licensed professional engineer and from the Texas Board of Professional Engineers. So Ernesto's going to come up here, is he here somewhere? Okay, yes, sir. Ernesto's going to come up and just say a few words to the community and the council. He knows he's embarking upon a pretty tough job, but he's very cool, calm, level-headed, and soaks in all material and information. And we're glad to hear Ernesto. Why don't you tell us a few words about yourself this morning?
Thank you again for your warm welcome. I'm glad to be here. Yesterday, I had mentioned that I am committed to getting out to all the five districts and seeing all the needs out there, also setting up our leadership team early on. That's very important to me, our assistant directors. And then giving kudos to also our stormwater and our traffic folks. I know streets is a priority, but they do hard work for the city as well, and I did not mention them enough yesterday, and they said, hey, we're here too. So I definitely want to give them praise. They work very hard. I'm here to serve the community and you all. At the very beginning, Mr. Zanoni and Yvonne at HR, and everybody else told me that this was a lot to handle, and after a week, I 100% agree. But I'm going to give it my all, I promise, and I'm committed, committed to all of you all here. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great, Ernesto. Ernesto knows the complexities of the job, and we said, you know, Ernesto, with all his experience and schooling, if nothing else, do it for your children.
That's right.
They're very excited about the news stuff yesterday.
He has several young children, and it'll be great for them to know that their dad is leading the way in Corpus Christi to rebuild all of our roads.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Thank you, Ernesto. In advance...
Thank you very much.
I think we have a comment. Councilman Badada?
Hey, well, I'll tell you what, Ernie, man, it's great to see you here. I'll tell you what, I'm typically a big supporter of promoting from within, but when I heard it was you, I was just really excited. And what is it, it's good to see you back here at the city. I know you did some work, great work, five years ago. So looking forward to continued success. Great to see you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernesto. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Ernesto.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And then Councilman Pusley brought communications up earlier, but I want to transition into our new communications director, so I'm pleased to announce Logan Cobb's appointment as our new communications director. Logan began her role yesterday, and we're excited to have her join the communications department and the city team. We know that communications is a central role in telling the community what we do here at the city. Logan has over five years' experience in public administration and communications. Previously, she served as a deputy city manager for the city of Springfield, Ohio. And she oversaw and led citywide communications, marketing, and employee engagement operations, among other duties there. Logan holds a Bachelor of Arts and a Master's of Public Administration from the University of Dayton, and she also has a graduate certificate in nonprofit and community leadership from the University of Dayton. So Logan's here, and she wants to talk to the council and the community this morning. Logan?
Peter, thank you for that introduction. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. So hailing from Ohio, I am so excited to be in Corpus Christi, and I am honored to serve as the new Director of Communications. Prior to moving to Corpus, I was thoroughly impressed with the growth and development that the city is currently experiencing, and I wanted to be a part of that. I have a true passion for encouraging collaboration across teams and departments, enhancing awareness of city projects and initiatives, both internally and externally, and increasing efficiencies within our workforce. Over the last 48 hours, less than, I've asked myself the following questions. How do my team's objectives map to the strategies and strategic priorities of council? How can we work to streamline processes and encourage interdepartmental teamwork while strengthening our department's ability to act as the hub for communications? How do we develop a marketing plan that fits our current needs while also addressing and planning for the future? And lastly, how can we increase awareness of 3-1-1 to better serve the residents of Corpus Christi? My primary short-term goal is to answer those questions and to execute accordingly. With the dedicated and hard-working team that we have in place, I'm confident that we'll do just that. I look forward to contributing to the growth and the success of the communications department, ensuring that we're releasing timely and relevant and engaging and factual information to the public to increase transparency and further build trust. And lastly, to continue to cultivate and encourage in our office of readiness and excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yes. We do.
Happy to be on board.
Yeah, thank you, Logan. Okay, and then our last staff announcement is one, is one reason so many folks are in the audience still.
So many firefighters.
Right, and this is to talk about Chief Rocha's retirement. So we're going to do, he's such a good leader, we're going to do two events at council. Today is just an announcement of his retirement, and then we're going to, in one of the subsequent meetings before he departs, have a more official departing with some gifts and pictures and that type of thing. But instead of just sending a memo to the council, we thought, given that Chief Rocha has been here for 11 years, something more formal in a council meeting would be more appropriate. So it is today that with mixed emotions, we announced to the community and to the council the retirement of Chief Rocha. He will be retiring in January, January 20th will be his last day, and he served the city for 11 years. I've worked closely with Chief Rocha in my three and a half years here. He is one of the distinguished executives that was known to be that to me on the onset of me coming here from... on the onset of me coming here from my appointment with the city council. He's a great leader and an innovator. Chief Rocha cares about his community, this community, Corpus Christi. It's, as much as he cares about the community, his family, and others here, his top priority, though, is the men and women in the fire department, and that was apparent on day one. He has worked tirelessly to ensure that the department has had the equipment and the staffing and the training necessary to protect his employees, but also to protect our community. And Chief Rocha has brought diversity to the fire department, and he is constantly striving to maintain best practices in all aspects of how we address public safety needs in our community. Under Chief Rocha's leadership, there's several things I'd like to recognize here this morning, some of his accomplishments. In 2013, this is way back in the beginning, Chief applied for a $3.3 million FEMA grant to hire 33 firefighters. And that was the start of the staffing turnaround for the fire department that historically was understaffed, a lot of vacancies, a lot of overtime, which stressed the employees. So today, for the first time in recent history, I think several decades, our fire department is fully staffed, meaning every position, every firefighter, emergency medical technician or paramedic position is filled. That's the first time in decades, I think, the chief's reminded me. 446, total of 446 firefighter paramedics. Our fire department operates 18 fire stations, 14 ambulances, and every firefighter is trained to be an EMT, an emergency medical technician. And that has continued under the chief's oversight. That's not a typical model, and many fire departments across the country graduate as a firefighter and then go back to become an EMT or a paramedic. And our model, which is really renowned, I think, across the country, firefighters come out as paramedics as well, so they can fight fires and they can save lives at the same time. In 2020, under Mayor Juarez and Chief Rocha's leadership, the city's fire department was at the forefront of the COVID-19 pandemic with the homebound vaccination program known as Save Our Seniors. It was the first of its kind in the state of Texas, and it was so well-received, not only here but statewide, that Governor Abbott made a trip down here to one of our fire stations and announced that he was going to have this model implemented statewide, in part because of chief's leadership and the mayor's leadership as well. The SOS program, as I mentioned, is a statewide model. Also, in 2021, Chief Rocha played a significant role in acquiring an Ambus, that massive ambulance bus that has been used, unfortunately, several times in our community. It can transport up to 21 patients simultaneously, so it's a pretty significant vehicle. Chief Rocha is recognized as a really a world leader. He's a national and international leader. He was elected by his peers to the president of, as president, to the Metropolitan Fire Chief Associations. This is a global association with fire departments that have at least 350 firefighters from across the world. They meet periodically to discuss best-practice concepts. The chief's the president of that association, elected by his peers. I don't know if you can get anything better than that, right? A global position like that. Chief has set a new standard for treating our community and residents with dignity and respect. He's one of those guys that he's a lovable person, right, chief? So no matter if you don't agree with what his policies are, he's just one of those likable, lovable guys. And we're going to miss you, chief, but we know you have some retirement to take care of. We do have a video here we'd like to show that has some of chief's highlights as well.
As I close out my career, I'm very excited about not only the current status of the fire department, but the future and where we're going.
Chief Rocha has been a strong leader in our fire department operations. He's a fire chief that cares about the frontline firefighters.
Our fire department and our firefighters are family. And Chief Rocha makes certain that that brotherhood and sisterhood exists. And that matters when they go out on that call.
The fire department is family. The fire department is friends. I always felt that my number-one priority was the life and safety of the firefighters.
And it takes a strong leader with a clear vision, with empathy, compassion, to move us forward in the direction that we need to be.
We see them as the best fire department in Texas. We can count on them. We can rely on them. They are a selfless group of individuals who care about the client first.
Our SOS program is the perfect example of that. And if it were not for his leadership, there's no way that we would have come out of COVID successfully in terms of serving those that could not leave their homes to get a vaccination.
It's great to leave a legacy of a department that really cares for their citizens.
Chief Rocha, we're going to miss you for sure, and we thank you for what you've done to improve your operation. We wish you well in your retirement, and we know that you'll still be here to watch over us and help us move forward.
It certainly won't be the end of the good work that you will do in this community. You care about the people of Corpus Christi. You've been a stellar partner of mine, and I want to thank you for always leading with him first.
I'm going to miss the members of the fire department. And every time a fire truck or an ambulance goes down the street, the siren goes off, I'm going to look and say a prayer and hope that the members of the fire department continue to provide the awesome service that they provide. But I thank God every day that I was able to become a member of the Corpus Christi Fire Department and to lead this great, great organization. Corpus Christi is my home, and I intend to stay here.
Oh, love that, chief.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for those kind words. If you're a member of the Corpus Christi Fire Department, would you please stand up one more time? Please. Mayor, this is what it's all about, the delivery of service to our public, to be able to make sure that each and every citizen is treated with dignity and respect. And these are the members that get that done. I just happen to be the one to help put the plans together. But you see gentlemen and ladies in white shirts and uniforms and civilian clothes. My civilian staff is also awesome, as well as this warrant personnel, emergency management, LEPC, fire operations, training, logistics, the whole nine yards. I just can't tell you how proud I am of this department, and I wish it the very best in the future. There's going to be somebody that's going to come after me. They are going to be better than what you have in front of you now, and I look forward to the future of the Corpus Christi Fire Department. We wouldn't be successful if it wasn't for the city manager, the mayor, the city council that supports their firefighters. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Wow.
Yeah. Any comments, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm dying to stop commenting. Chief Rocha, I truly want to cry because this is so touching. And your leadership, your time here, has truly made a difference. You're humble, and that's what matters. You're very humble by what you said. But all of that happens with leadership, and everyone has their own style of leadership. And so, yes, someone is coming after you, but they've got huge boots to fill. And so we just want you to know, I know you know it, but we have to say it. We're so proud of what you've done. I remember you telling me when I got here, yeah, I've been here five years. I remember that like it was yesterday. So when Peter said, or when we started talking about the retirement or heard about it, and it being 11 years, I thought, that is a decade. You have contributed something, a legacy, that you're leaving behind forever in those, in that decade, little over a decade. So, you know, the words "thank you" nowhere near enough, but just know how heartfelt it is, what you have done and the way you have led this department. Because this council, and I can say since 2016, since I've been here, you, Chief Markle, our public safety officers, men and women, firefighters, police officers, all of you all have been number one and will continue to be. But thank you, because it isn't just about the council. The city manager has made it a priority. You have always made it a priority. So thank you. Thank you for doing that, for everyone that you serve and their families and your children, and just the legacy. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I have just a few other things that's going to be a hard act.
We do have, I'm sorry. We sent some comments.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Councilman Molina.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Rocha, thank you for your dedication to the city. Even when I had first became a council member, your door has always been open, and you've always have made it easy to come and talk to you. You've always been accessible and always been ready to share your knowledge and information about any issues that I had concerning the fire department and public safety. It has been an honor to serve this city alongside you, and an even greater honor for me to call you my friend. So thank you so much for all you've done for us.
I'm sorry. Councilman Martinez.
Chief, you know, we've known each other for many years now, even before I was on council. And, you know, I think hearing all the accolades, things that you've done, you know, I think that it's also important, the things that people don't see that you've done, and the kind of person that you are behind the scenes and not just when you're out in front of everybody. And I'll tell the story of when we met. I was representing the city in a big lawsuit, and there was a lot at stake. And during the trial, one of the lawyers did something, and I had Chief Shauer with me, and he said, "Chief Rocha was with me at that meeting. He can tell everybody what really happened." And so I said, "We'll call him." And so he called Chief Rocha, and in 45 minutes, Chief Rocha was at the courthouse in his full dress, ready to testify. And he did testify, and because of his testimony, we won the case and saved the city potentially millions of dollars. So, you know, that willingness and ability to be there when you were needed, not just, you know, in things that were part of your job, but in anything that would help, you were always ready, willing, and able to do it. And, you know, I know you're still going to be around. I told my wife, I said, "He couldn't stand to be here without me. That's why he's retiring." That's right, that was. But chief, I look forward to what you have ahead of you. You know, enjoy your retirement and thank you for your service.
Councilman Smith.
Chief, you know, this city's going to miss you on there. And I want to say one story about the chief that kind of really puts it in place. So we're in the middle of the pandemic. Everybody is tremendously concerned. We mentioned "Save Our Seniors" on there. They were housebound, desperate for the vaccination. I get a call from one of our citizens. It was Chief Rocha giving the shot. That is leadership. Thank you.
Councilman Lerma.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I've known you for a short time, a new kid on the block. When I first met you, we were talking about what is it that you need? You know, I've always been a big supporter of the fire and the police department, but I didn't know how it functioned, how things got done. But through your leadership, you taught me a lot, just like Chief Markle has, on how things work, on getting the process done for the equipment that you need, for the different things that your departments need. And it was very simplified. It was just so easy, the way you explained it to me. And, you know, that's leadership, able to communicate with others and get things across. That's what I appreciate from you and also Chief Markle, because you two guys are great leaders for the city of Corpus Christi. And definitely, you're going to be missed, chief. You know, but I'm sure there's someone out there that's going to fill those shoes. And they're going to do, yeah, I know, they're lined up, I know. But that's the job that the city manager needs to handle, you know? But the city is better off. We're much better than what we were 11 years ago, and that's the important thing. We've been able to grow. You've been able to staff the department where it needs to be, you know? And also, the people that are behind you have been taught properly on how to manage a department this big. So we have a future. We have a bright future, and it's through your leadership that we're there. And we want to thank you, and I also want to thank the men and women that are in blue. You know, you guys, you know, you guys do a tremendous job for the city of Corpus Christi. Thank you, and God bless you guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley.
Well, chief, you and I worked together long before I came to the council, and I just want to thank you. You were always gracious and helpful, even though I wasn't a member of this governmental entity. And I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your service to this community. And, you know, as a member of the council, you often listen to what's going on in the background. And as I talk to the other firefighters and people who worked under your supervision, I never heard anything bad about you. And that goes a long way to exemplifying your leadership skills and ability. And I know that police and fire have this sort of friendly competition going on, but I think you and Chief Markle have worked very well together for the betterment of this community, and I sincerely appreciate that. You don't always see that in communities, so we're very lucky and very fortunate to have had you. Thank you very much. And Peter, don't lose his phone number, because you know our police chief left once. And so, you never know how that might work out. So anyway. But anyway, congratulations, chief. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I, again, and as Councilman Molina said, I appreciate your friendship as much as I do what you have done for this community. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
Chief, thank you very much. I'm going to miss our tours of District 5 fire stations. Well, unfortunately, I only got one now, so it'd be a short tour. Only Fire Station 17 is left. Also, I'm going to miss beating you up on your budget, especially your overtime. But it's been a pleasure working with you. It really has. Sorry to see you go. And for those of you who don't know, Chief Rocha came to us from Kansas City. So I'll leave you with this. Go Chiefs.
Councilman Barera.
Chief, just as everybody said, I mean, thank you so much. I mean, yesterday, I was blessed that I happened to be accessible to Chris Six, and they called me right away. And, you know, I said, "Yeah, without a doubt, I want to mention some good words about the chief. It's just you make it easy." And what I said about to be going, to go through a pandemic, a hurricane, Winter Storm Uri, you know, it's just the confidence that we have in you and the confidence that the community has in you. That's, and it's a testament to your team and all the hard work that they do as a result of your leadership. We just can't say enough. You know, we annexed you into District 3. Hopefully, you won't decide to run for office, because I don't think I'd stand a chance. But thank you so much for your service. I can't say enough. Enjoy retirement.
Okay, thank you, chief. Yes, 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 sir.
Great, yeah, thanks, chief, and thanks to your team that's here as well. We appreciate you all being here this morning. We're going to do one more later on, so we'll get that date, and we'll see all your team back as well, chief. And Mayor, just two other quick things on the city manager report. We're going to keep on the theme of public safety. And I want to remind the council of our Light Up Corpus Christi initiative that the city council has approved. As many of you are aware, daylight savings time ended last Sunday, November 6. So we lose an hour of daylight each day now, and that means that the commute to work or school is darker in the morning. And depending on what time you leave at night, it can be pitch black outside. So driving in the dark is one of the most challenging drive times, and commuters also see reduced road visibility in the morning and in the evening. And that's one of the reasons we have this initiative called Light Up CC. Safety is important not only for the driver, but for pedestrians that might be on the sidewalks, walking or biking. And adequate lighting is necessary to protect them from vehicular traffic. So part of the city's vision, as part of the City's Vision Zero Initiative that was spearheaded initially by Councilman Ben Molina, the city is committed to making safe streets to to eliminate traffic fatalities and reduce injuries. So, this next item that we want to talk to you about is known as our Light Up CC Initiative. It's in partnership with AEP Texas. The plan is to convert over 15,000 street lights from the yellow glowing 80s lights to a very bright LED light. And studies have shown that people perceive these new LED lights better than an orange lit light in the streets. They, they have better, better, let me find it, peripheral vision. And it also improves their braking time. So, it's not only good for vehicle, vehicular drivers, pedestrians, but also for, for our neighborhoods to make people feel safe and be safer with better lit neighborhoods and streets. So, the use of LED technology for streets light, for streetlights has increased in popularity across the country due to the fact that the bulbs or the system has a longer lifespan. There's better, better color rendition, better brightness, less carbon footprint for the community. And there's an improved energy efficiency compared to the yellow glowing lights that we have. It's estimated that once all the lights are replaced, they'll save taxpayers close to 675,000 annually. I'm not sure if people know, but the taxpayers pay for the streetlights through our budget. We pay to keep those lights on. So, the orange glowing lights are, cost more, the not as bright. And so, by converting, our community is gonna be safer, brighter, and we save taxpayer money. So, it's a huge win overall. Tammy, from our finance department, Tammy Huffman is our utilities analyst. She's gonna talk about the progress in this program. Phase one began in September and phase two is, is gonna begin in January. And Tammy, we have a small PowerPoint presentation just to make sure the community is aware, if they haven't noticed, the conversions. Tammy, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Tammy Huffman, I am the utilities analyst for the city. And, how do I get to me? Okay, there we go. I want to give you a brief update on the Light Up CC project, which is the streetlight conversion project. The purpose of the project is to provide better nighttime lighting. It improves public safety and security for the community and it saves taxpayers' dollars. On May 24th, 2022, the city partnered with AEP Texas in a conversion project to upgrade existing streetlights to LED lights. $2.1 million will be invested in this project and it will save the city around $675,000 per year. There are two phases. We have nine city zones. Phase one consists of zones one through three. Phase two consists of zones four through nine. Over 15,000 lights will be converted once the project is complete. The project's start date for phase one was September 7th, 2022. Completion date is expected December 15th, 2022. At that time, we will move into phase two. And a completion date for phase two is expected November of 2023. That will be all nine zones. Here we have a project map of all nine zones and a key to the progress for each of those zones. Here is a good before and after picture. On your left, you have the high pressure sodium lights. As you will see, there's a lot more light pollution. On the right, you have your new LED, much clearer, better visibility. Here are some pictures of the crews in progress installing the new lights. For current status, for zones one and two, the conversion is already complete. Zone three is in progress and is to be completed by December 15th. We are currently in the ninth week of the project. We are averaging about 350 lights per week, although the crews outdid themselves last week and did a lot more than that. As of November 7th, we had 2,600 lights that were, had already been converted. For future status, zone four, the materials have been ordered and we expect to begin that December 15th, 2022. For zone five, materials have been ordered as well. We will come, begin that after zone four is complete. We expect to start that January 2023. Each of the following zones, we will begin immediately after the other one is, previous one is finished. Zone six, March 2023. Zone seven, May 2023. Zone eight, July 2023. And zone nine will start September 2023. Some of the milestones that we've achieved in this project, September 7th is when we began the project in zones one and two. October 17th, 2022, zones one and two were complete and we began on zones three. On November 11th, we, Public Works provided us the list of lights for zones six and sevens where we could provide that to AEP so they can order the materials so that we can continue the project. December 15th, zone three, we expect that to be complete and we will begin zone four immediately after that. And I do want to say that once the, all nine zones are converted, we will be working with AEP to do lighting analysis, to fill in the areas that are dark, add additional lighting where, where we need, need lights, new, new lights and poles. And then that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm open for questions.
I don't see any questions, Tammy, but thank you. That was very educational and good news.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tammy.
Tammy, thank you. And that, the map is in your agenda material for those nine zones. So, essentially, we started on the island and we're moving northwest towards Cal Allen. Okay, great project. Now, one final thing, Mayor, is Public Health District, which we know the city council did a, really a Herculean achievement by creating a new business model and approving it earlier this year. Dr. Khan, who we recognized recently to the community and who's been leading our, our department, is going to have an in-service training day this Friday. And so, the health department will be closed to the community as well as our WIC program. And we'd like to have Dr. Khan come up and just explain that to the council and the community and have her say hi to you all again today. Dr. Khan, come on up. Dr. Khan's been busy in our community attending, I think, just about any event that's out there, Dr. Khan. She was at the Lexington over the weekend and went to several events to better learn our great city. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Khan.
Thank you, city manager, Madam Mayor, city council members. Good afternoon. And yes, we had a flu and a COVID event at St. John's Baptist Church, yes. And we are having another one on this Saturday. So, the strike team is doing great. And then our team members, we ran the Alzheimer's awareness walk and seven of us ran the diabetes walk. So, yeah, we've been pretty busy outside of work as well.
Pull up the presentation, please.
Yes, please.
There we go.
The Corpus Christi Noises County Health District will be closed from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on November 18th to public. The time will be used to conduct an in-service training for all of our staff. The health department team has not received such professional opportunity in the past several years. And as we move our health district forward, learning best practices is just one of the first steps. The training will focus on improving customer experience. A trained staff is better equipped to take care of the community, leading to better health outcomes. That is one of our main goals. The team will learn about bloodborne pathogens. They'll receive training, certification, enhancing their knowledge on HIV, hepatitis B and C. We want the staff to recognize potential hazards so that they can keep themselves safe as well as they keep others safe. Our staff's safety is very, very important and is an integral part of having a safer work environment for them. We all agree that COVID has brought a lot of change. People have suffered illness, loss, personal and work-related stress. Many in the community have felt lonely and vulnerable physically, emotionally, and financially. Good mental health is crucial for a healthy community. Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation, one of our great partners, will provide an overview and train our staff on the importance of recognizing a mental health crisis, as well as we can talk more to our staff as to the services available at the health district. We'll also do a brief SWOT analysis. We want to do great things for the people we serve. And to do that, it's important to recognize what our strengths are, areas where we need to improve, and what opportunities lie ahead of us. This in-service training will help us build a strong foundation for our services, our team, and future of public health. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Khan, Councilman Smith.
Well, thank you. I just want to kind of follow up on the city manager's comments. Thank you, Dr. Khan, for going out into the community, getting that face forward. I was at one of the events on the other side of the bay and it was a great pleasure being able to watch Dr. Khan in action. I think you're, you are a great public health director on there and this community, not just Corpus Christi, but the community as a whole is very well served. So, thank you again.
Thank you for your support and I appreciate your time introducing me to key partners.
Councilman Barera.
I, just a brief comment. I just want to say that, you know, I had two medical professionals commend us on the hire. One in particular, a gentleman I'd never met before. I saw him at the gym and he came up to me and he just, he just felt it important to say that he's so glad to see that we hired such a prestigious individual to come work for us. So, thank you for, thank you for that and we look forward to some great things.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your comments. And again, if there are events happening in your districts, if there are communities, we will be going out and invitations will be coming out to all of you soon. We would be doing a ribbon cutting for our mobile van. So, that will be out in the community more. You'll see us more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Khan.
Thanks, Dr. Khan. We appreciate that. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's report. Sorry, it took a little longer today. I was reflecting, though, we have a very diverse and talented group of individuals that spoke today and they're here to serve the community and lead our 4,000 employees. This is just a sample of the talent that we have for the New Day at City Hall and our community. So, I just want to reflect on that as well and turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. No, that was, those are some big introductions and farewells. So, thank you. With that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item I, consent agenda items five through 16. Do we have any requests from the council to pull any items, numbers five through 16?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull number 10 and 11.
Number 10 and number 11. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull number 12 and 15.
Number 12, number 15. Do we have any requests from the public for public comment on any item numbers five through 16? No. Pull item number 13. Okay. So, with that, we're gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of items numbers 10, 11, 12, 15, and 13.
So, move.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nope. The motion carries. So, we'll go straight to item number 10. That is a motion authorizing a professional services contract with SCS engineers to provide conceptual design process design and permitting services for a new solid waste facility complex.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Standby for questions.
Uh, who pulled, Councilman Hernandez.
And I apologize, David. I was trying to get to call you on this particular thing, but I got caught up on some other items on the agenda. But specifically, this, you know, we had a discussion about this a couple of weeks ago, maybe, maybe over a month ago, on this particular, but I can't remember. Did this also include the composting facility that we were talking about as part of the design for this, for this facility?
No, sir. This is only for the transfer station, the administration building, the crew quarters, and the parking facility. The compost facility is a completely different agenda item and a completely different permit process.
Okay. So, but, I mean, we're talking about the same location of the J.C. Elliott Transfer Station.
Right. We are currently, this is for the J.C. Elliott Transfer Station, the 92 acre field adjacent to the.
I just want to make sure it's clear, because it didn't, it wasn't clear on the, on the presentation, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I just clarify? Thank you, Councilman. So, the composting facility will not be located here. We're gonna place that at the, what's known as our, uh, Cefé Valenzuela landfill. About 10 miles?
15.
15 miles from this location. Right.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 10. Oh, Councilman Pesley. I didn't see your light. Can you turn your microphone on, please?
I'm, I'm once again concerned about the evaluation process on the, the matrix here in the selection of SCS engineering. It looks like we only interviewed two of all of the companies that submitted proposals on this. We only interviewed two. Can you explain why that happened for somebody?
Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services. One thing I, I would like to point out, on projects like this where they're complex and large, it's quite common for, for firms to team up. And even though SES is not located here in Corpus Christi, they are teamed up with various firms that are in Corpus Christi, such as Hanson Engineering and NRG and also.
And I appreciate that, Jeff, I really do. But I, I just wondered why we didn't offer an interview process to the other applicants.
Can, okay. Mayor and Council, hi. Josh Gronley, Assistant Director for Finance and Procurement. Again, we look for the natural break in the, the pack, sir. And so, in this specific instance, we work with the department. After we evaluated the criteria, we had two scores in the high above, north of 45 and then several that were under 40. So, we had 39, I guess, would have been the second closest to that. So, we just look for the, the top of the pack in order to find the natural break on where the, the specialty comes into place.
But if you don't offer them an interview opportunity, how does that, how does that make the scoring fair?
Well, the, so, the, the interview portion of the evaluation is not intended to be anything but supplemental to the technical evaluation. So, the technical evaluation is where they actually put pen to paper and provide us a proposal on their qualifications. And the intent of the interview or oral presentation is to fill in any gaps that we don't have based on that evaluation criteria.
But you give the same amount of points to the interview process as you do the technical proposal. So, obviously, it's important.
In this particular instance, it was, this was implemented prior to the policy updates that we had and the process enhancements. But now, we typically do a 70/30, but we work with the department because, again, the criteria that's established are based off of department's wishes.
Well, I just, I just once again think, you know, this council has made a big issue out of trying to utilize our local talent. And I understand Jeff explains that they team up with other companies, but the fact of the matter is, the lead company on this is a company that's not located in Corpus Christi. And in the two years I've been here, I've not seen them on anything else that we've done here. And to not offer an interview opportunity to the other participants in this process, to me, is patently unfair.
Well, local knowledge and criteria is a component of the technical evaluation. And because they did have subcontractors or team-ups with local firms, they were able to nail in that technical evaluation because they do have the experience on the project team for that category.
Yeah. Can I add one thing, Councilman? So, this is similar to the fire station that's being designed, Fire Station Three. That firm also is not local, but what they do have is a lot of experience in fire stations, not just any type of building. This project similarly, we want a firm that understands the solid waste business, the business of transfer stations. There's a lot of complexity in turning radiuses and parking vehicles and getting them out of the yard. And so, these two firms that are ranked high in the technical review have that. They have a lot of experience in solid waste design. Not to say a Turner Ramirez can't design it. I would submit they probably have limited, if maybe, I'll just say limited experience in designing these facilities. So... So, in these types of specialty facilities, like a fire station, like a solid waste transfer station, a yard where numerous big, big trucks are parked and have to fuel, and where crew quarters are, it's a little bit more technical, and the more experience a firm has in designing these, the better for the city. So, we agree, local preference is important. We also agree, though, that the best product is one that has been tried and tested before, and that is the case with Fire Station number three, and that's the reason I believe that these two firms, SCS and Tectra Tech, ranked high in the technical review because of that knowledge of the design that's required and their experience in the past.
And I understand that perfectly, Peter, but I also understand that our local firms can also, in the reverse of what Jeff said, can team up with other companies as well.
That, right.
And so, but if we're not including them in on the entire process, I think that is patently unfair to our local talent, and I just want to make that a point. I want the staff to understand that this is something that's a priority for me. Personally, may not, may not be another council member on this table that agrees with me, but these companies, they live in our community, they pay their taxes here, they support our nonprofit organizations, and it just seems like every time we turn around, we're sending work up the road to cities or companies in cities that don't do that. So, it's entirely important, when I see a matrix like this where we did not even allow the other companies to even participate in interview process, it just seems to me like somebody made a decision before we ever went through this process. So, thank you.
But you just said that the local aspect is being considered.
Correct. So, architectures and engineers, we can't apply a direct local preference. That's, the state law currently prohibits that. It's something that we're working with Tammy Ambry's group in order to make sure that we advocate for.
Right.
But in.
My point is, they did not allow the local teams that are listed on this sheet to even participate in the interview process, and that's not fair.
Yeah, I understand that, and what I'm trying to reiterate, because I don't think you're the only person on this dais who feels that local, you know, I think everybody here was, is a business owner or was a business owner, so we aren't moving forward with this without understanding, which is what I think you said, that you did take into account under the technical, maybe you said it, under the technical part of this, the fact that they partner up with local, or that they're, that they partner up, because you can't by law give.
We have emphasis on the local knowledge. It's part of the criteria built into the technical evaluation, where we say, you know, it's one thing to understand streets, but do you understand Corpus Christi streets, or in this case, you know, the transfer stations, or the climate here, the environment, you know, building to windstorm capabilities. Then, the things that we have locally, we build that into the criteria to try to narrow our audience to the best of the legal ability we have, without being able to directly say, you know, we can give points for being located in Corpus Christi.
There are a couple of things I'd just like to make sure you appreciate. So, I spent 15 years on that side of the fence, and there's a lot of strategy that goes into how you team on these things, and we look at the experience of the firm, and then we look at the individual project experience. Now, sometimes you make a decision on whether which firm is going to be top, is going to be prime, and which is going to be a sub. Now, SCS has worked on past projects as a sub to Hanson. For whatever reason, they decided to put SCS up front, but like I say, Hanson's a sub to them. Hanson's going to have a significant part of the project. Now, a lot of the other folks that submitted are architects. Now, architecture is part of it, but it's a subset of the work. Now, Sulca Navaterno submitted, but they were also a sub to the SCS team, so they submitted as a sub, and they submitted as a prime. Now, they didn't score very well as a prime, and I'm guessing because they didn't have a lot of the other skill sets they needed for this, but, you know, you had three local firms that were part of the SCS team.
And I guess, you know, they're not, they weren't interviewed, so it's blank, and so that looks as if they're right, they're not given the opportunity to score, right?
Yeah, well, they had a seven-point gap on the written SOQ, and since it's a cumulative score.
Right.
You know, I've got to say, there were a lot of times when I was on that side of the fence, they were doing me a favor, because I would spend a lot of time and effort to prepare for one of these things, and it's hard to make up a huge gap in an interview.
Right, right, right. Okay, Councilman Smith.
Thank you. I want to go back to city manager's comment that the compost facility is going to be at Cefe.
We did a one-on-one survey with the city council, each of the individuals, and the consensus that we received back was to move the compost facility out to Cefe away from the J.C. Elliott.
I guess, you know, council is a body, we need to act as a body, and on something, this is a big policy decision, that a one-on-one, you know, there are a lot of issues to financials on there and the others. I would have much preferred that that decision was made as council as a body, because we do not have any authority as individuals. We only have a consensus body when we're up here on this dais, the nine of us, not any one on an individual type. So, I do hope that in the future, that we recognize council as a body and not as individuals.
Right, and we did do it as a body, so Councilman, let me take us back a few steps. Probably over a year ago, we came to city council as a body to recommend everything at this location, so everything being the compost facility, the new crew quarters, parking. This body said, no, we don't want to do that, and so we said, okay, let's, we'll go back and look. They didn't, you didn't want to put the compost facility there because of fears of odor and other issues with the fast-growing London town area. So, we went back and did some pricing to see what would be the business impact if we moved it to some of the location within the city, or if we moved it to the Cefe landfill. That we showed to this body in executive session.
Correct.
To the entire council as a body in executive session. The prevailing sentiment from the body in the executive session was, separate the two, put the transfer, put the transfer station here, keep the transfer station here, and place the composting facility at the Cefe landfill. That was the sentiment of the body. We know we don't vote in an executive session, but the comments made, the suggestions made, the body seemed to indicate, let's separate the two. What David Leifeld's talking about, he confirmed that, followed it up with individual conversations just to make sure what we heard is what we heard, and that's what we think we heard, but certainly today in this item, the body can comment, we can cancel this item, we can, we can join them back up again. We did that a year ago, but to me, the prevailing sentiment of the council after hearing it several times is that this council, this body, doesn't want the composting facility at the current location.
And I think this goes back to Councilman Pusley earlier on, executive session versus open session, but the things that we discussed in that executive session on there, now one thing in executive session, you cannot make a decision on there. To make a decision, you have to come out and vote, and I think with this policy, that probably would have been the better way to do it, and very importantly, the public needs to know how we're weighing this on there with it. So, there was a lot of financial information given with it, and it's, I think it's unfair to the public not to know, we're saying, okay, we made the decision and back, how we think that the council did in the back rooms on something that will impact this city for decades, both financially and other reasons, so.
That's a good point, Councilman. We can certainly delay this and come back with those financials.
I'm not asking to delay this particular part, because it's, I wouldn't even brought this up if you hadn't mentioned, we have decided, you know, that was news to me, that we have decided.
Yeah, right.
To do this, so it really caught me by surprise. Now, this, this contract here, that's just for the transfer portion, right?
Right.
So, we can move forward with it.
Right, but if the council is a body, if you're saying you're not sure if the body wants to have the composting at the Cefe, this is only, this contract will move forward, and it's going to be hard to reverse, so if the council has any doubt that you want to do this, we can bring this item back with a full public presentation on the pros and cons of the different locations to include the impact to the ratepayer.
Well, I think that would be the public thing to do, so we can engage our, the public to see.
Well, the two items are totally separate items, they're different permits, and so we can bring back the compost facility as a separate item without jeopardizing this one. There's room on the location for both facilities, but we can bring the other one back at a later date and get this one moving forward. The biggest part of this, the time delay for this particular contract is going to be the state permitting. It's six to nine months just on the permitting alone, and that's a general permit. It doesn't need a dedicated design to get the permit, so we've got time to make that decision as we move forward.
And I fully support moving forward on this contract.
Yeah, yeah, good points. Councilman Barrena.
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the procurement, is there a possibility in the future that there's a disclosure in our packet with regard to the entire team, so that way we're aware of their local participation? There's oftentimes that, as a hub in a DBE, that I joke around, that sometimes I'm the token hub in DBE to be able to meet some participation, but what is it, that way, that information is disclosed to us when we make that decision as to what the participation levels is if they're local? And then, the other thing is also, is something that does, is it also encourages a prime, this for the very first time, we were a prime, and we used a larger firm to work as a sub with us here recently, and we were awarded a project, so that, I think that's something else that cultivates it with regard to the policymaking, I understand, because that's one of the reasons that we want local. I mean, people like me are always competing with Houston and Dallas, and it's frustrating because they have X amount under their belt, and of course, that's my world. So, once again, to answer my question, is there a possibility of including the entire team on the information that comes to us?
I see no problem with it.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, I think that would.
Include that in the agenda memo, and make sure it's clear who else is involved in the team.
Yeah.
I wanted to confer here, since it's a joint effort.
And I think, I think we've been loud and clear that this council, I would think that my colleagues understand that individuals that invest in Corpus Christi, and I want to commend Peter, I mean, Pete Dawson is moving across the hall from me, you know, what is it, Dykema is now Levy Dykema, and they partnered with a firm in Austin. So, we want those partnerships to be able to expand the economy here in Corpus Christi, and reward people for moving in. So, yeah, I think that would behoove us to do so.
Councilman Hernandez.
Well, Josh, you got beat up by me the last time we went through this, right? But it was the other side. The natural break thing you have, I think, is a little, you know, we don't see how they're scored on the front side, right? So, we only see what comes up to us, and to Councilman Pusley's point, you know, you didn't interview the third person, which, you know, it's based on your natural break of the 40, but it, you know, when you don't include someone just because of a single point, it makes, it makes it a little difficult, right? So, I don't know, maybe you should look at it from a perspective of a top three and have it consistent, or, you know, because you can have your natural break, and it could be four people, it could be two people, it could be, you know, it becomes a little hard to, you know, look at and say, is this process fair? So, I've always mentioned that this should be something that we should look at as to be consistent from our perspective, so there's no gaps for people to say it's unfair, right? Whether you're, you know, wanting to make sure it's fair for local people, or fair for anybody that comes in and submits a policy, I mean, or submits a bid or whatever, or RFQ. So, just whatever the perception needs to be that we're fair, right? If we're perceived as fair, and they've got a fair shot, they'll come back and submit again. If they don't get a fair shot, they may not come back and submit, and then that's bad for us. So, maybe you can rethink that and look at it to see how we can improve that.
We'll continue to look at that, Councilman.
Okay. The other thing was, you know, to Councilman Smith's point, I still think the composting facility should be at the J.C. Elliott transfer, I mean, just simply because of the distance to Cefe Venezuela, if you can limit the amount of trips and the distance. In, you know, in talking with David, there was, he wasn't concerned about any kind of smell or anything like that, so I think they're, you know, kind of having the synergies of their, by your comments, they're two separate permits, so the construction of each one wouldn't be, wouldn't be an issue, so I don't think we need to delay this to, you know, for the, and further discussion at a later date with the composting facility, but well, like I said, I just want to be on record saying that I think it should be at J.C. Elliott. Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Listen, I just want to say, I sincerely appreciate the job that you are doing, and I don't mean to make my comments sound like I'm being critical. I think you guys do a great job, and I know you're trying to make sure that this city is provided with the best competent people to do the jobs that we're trying to do here, and I sincerely appreciate that, I really do. So, I want to just echo what Councilman Hernandez said, whatever we need to do to make the process look like it's fair, we need to try to make those steps forward, but I do think you guys are doing a great job, and I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, David, very much.
I agree. Ms. Trezogno.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Councilman, for those final comments you made. I did want to highlight in the presentation, David, because this is a good news story. We're going to continue to refine our purchasing, and I'm taking note, because maybe we'll talk about the interview process with the team, but recently, I went out to talk to the solid waste employees. We have over 100 drivers. Every day, 30,000 homes are touched by them. They go to 20,000 garbage pickups and 10,000 recycling pickups, 30,000 interactions every day. So, finally, I got a chance to go out early in the morning to just tell the crews, thank you for the job you do. I rarely hear any negative comments from our community when it comes to garbage and recycling collection, and when I went to meet with them, everything was set up outside, and I'm like, well, folks, aren't we going to be, where's the crew quarters? Aren't we going in to the, you know, the big meeting room where you guys meet to talk about business and the strategy for the day? And they said, no, sir, we meet out here. This is, we don't have any facilities, this is where we meet. And so, upon walking into the building that was there, that's extremely dilapidated, there was a marquee plaque on there, and it showed the building was built in 1973. So, this investment that council's making today is the first in, what, five decades to invest in our solid waste employees so they have real crew quarters, where their team leads can meet with the drivers in the morning and talk about safety or anything that they need to talk about at their roll call, where they have appropriate facilities today at that site that I went to a couple weeks ago, they use a porta potty outside, because it's only a men's restroom, there's no women's facilities. So, this is a tremendous, the good news on this story, and we heard your comments, we're going to reflect on those and change processes, but the good news is that our solid waste drivers who work hard every day, this is a big step forward for them, to give them appropriate crew quarters for them to check in, take a break, check out, maybe even take a shower before they go home. So, I want to thank the council for your commitment to them and to this item today.
Thank you, Peter. Councilman.
Second.
Hang on, Councilman Smith.
Well, I want to do a quick follow-up on that, too, that in past presentations, we have one of the lower solid waste charges in the state. We provide a lot of service, not only do we do the regular solid waste, we do the recycle, that brush pickup, we're probably a leader there. So, as far as going out there and serving the community, I think, David, you and your crew are doing a very good job.
Well, we appreciate that, and I do want to highlight the fact that we're adding more female drivers to our fleet. In fact, one started this morning, and so we're really excited, but that does throw a lot of complications in when you don't have the restroom facilities for the female drivers.
No, that's terrible.
You've got to make it work, so.
It's terrible.
We've got one restroom for the ladies and about 15 or 20 women trying to use it, so it's important that we move it forward.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you for that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
And that'll take us to item number 11, which was pulled. Councilman Hernandez, I believe, that is a motion authorizing a 14-month streetlight installation agreement with AEP Texas to convert 11,038 existing light fixtures to LED light fixtures for residential areas across all five districts. Your question, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, for the benefit of Councilman Barrena. Okay, for the benefit of Councilman Barreda, I like the project, not against the project, but there are some things that I want to make sure we clear it up here. Since this is referencing a certificate of obligation that was voted on 2018, I was not on the council at the time, so I went and looked at it, or asked to have it pulled. It wasn't included in the agenda memo or the packet, and I went and read the actual ordinance, which is ordinance number 31434, talking about the certificate of obligation for $15,750,000 for various projects. And in section one, which it talks about this specifically, "For the purposes of paying contractual obligations of the city to be incurred in making payment of public improvement for the public purposes, the extent of availability funds to wit constructing, renovating, equipping, enlarging, improving city streets," generally being Rodfield, Yorktown, and Six Points intersection, that's number one, and two refers to areas on, in Uptown and North Beach with reflection to what's going on with the new Harbor Bridge. But since we're using this funding for, you know, the streetlight program for the entire city, I asked, it didn't specify that in the section, in that section, and so when I asked finance about it, they said the term generally, and I mentioned it, generally being Rodfield, Yorktown, and Six Points allows it to be expanded beyond that. Now, in the finance world, in the bond instrument world, that probably makes a lot of sense, right? However, in the real world, that seems a little deceptive. And I use the term deceptive because you say here, and it means more than that. So, I asked for us to get a letter from a bond counsel. That was, they sent us an email. I asked for, I'm asking for that email from our bond counsel to be included, saying it is an authorized item to be expanded beyond those locations, Rodfield, Yorktown, and Six Points, to reflect that. Also, please include the actual ordinance in this, in the minutes for this agenda item, and that's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
This is a great news item, and I just want to, I want to commend everybody involved in working on this, because this is something that, I guess, you know, what, 2018? Right? Is that where the monies are coming from?
Right, yeah, the 2018.
Right. So, this is not going to incur, you know, any cost to anyone, and this is going to, literally, pun intended, light up Corpus Christi. So, I think it's wonderful. We've got several, we've got, what, nine?
Zones.
Zones, and we've got two completed. So, this just helps, and it's wonderful. And I know every district has so many parts of town that we need to light up, or, you know, improve the lighting in this case, because this is conversion.
This is an extreme safety program.
Extreme safety program, exactly. I can't wait to light up Yorktown, just so you know.
Sorry, I forgot one item as well.
Exactly, I know.
I apologize, I forgot one item. Also, with reflection to the CIP page, the, it says that the amount is $300,000 from the GEO 18 bond, 2018 bond, when, in the actual amount in the bond package for 2018 is $500,000, and it's not reflected properly in terms of how that is spent. However, the downtime portion of it, which was also on the 2018 bond, for $650,000, is documented properly within the CIP. So, I ask that we go back and make the amendments necessary to that so we can make sure we're reflecting the, how much is being spent and from where.
Okay.
Okay?
Wonderful. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 11.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 12, who pulled?
I pulled that, yeah.
You did. So, item number 12, Councilman Smith, this is a motion authorizing an annual renewal of a joint funding agreement with the United States Geological Survey. Yes, sir?
Okay, just to relay, more of a thought than a question on there, so, and the Three Rivers Nuasis Stream Gauge is, when we were watching the August rains and flows on there, that we got a lot more flow than the lake was filling. And, you know, when you're in a flood situation in a stream gauge, it's a bit of an art to calculate that with it, and I'm just wondering whether, working with the USGS or within the department, that we look at those numbers and see, do we have a, are we properly calculating that stream flow? Because it's important to us, as you explained before, when we're doing our discharges and things like that, that's, that particular gauge dictates, it sets a level, so if we're overcalculating the amount of flow in there, it costs us on discharges. So, that was one thing. And then the other portion of it is I noticed the contract was due to be signed no later than September 1st. Have we executed that contract?
No, we haven't. That's, the USGS asks for us to respond by September, but this money comes out of the budget, and as you all know, we haven't passed the budget until October. So, I communicate with the USGS, explain the situation, they understand, they wait for approval or disapproval of the funds, i.e. the contract, and so I've told them when we're going to meet, when it was going to go in front of council, they're aware.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 15, pulled by Councilman Smith?
Yep.
Yep. This is a one reading ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Coastal Management Program grant from the Texas General Land Office in the amount of $175,000 for Phase One of the Oso Bay Hike and Bike Trail Project. Your question, Mr. Zanoni?
Well, I asked it to be pulled. If you could just give the council a brief overview of what this is, because this is kind of the first step in a larger project, and I've worked very closely with it, but council as a whole hadn't seen it. So, just quickly, you don't have to go through all the pages, but what's this all about? You can explain to council.
Yes, sir. I'm Robert Dodd, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. This is Phase One of a project. It's a completion of a feasibility and structural engineering assessment in the existing old Tex-Mex Railroad, railroad spur. Confirm the project can be completed over the old bridge and trestle. We could develop a master plan. Phase One is estimated at $175,000, and Phase One needs to be completed to determine the total cost of this project.
Can you bring up the graphic that just shows the location?
Yes, sir. There's, there's the Oso Wetland Preserves on one side, and I guess Flower Bluff, and in between there, you can see that. Yes, sir. The hike would be the hike and bike trail.
Okay, and just kind of where we are together, that the community raised $30,000 of private money, thank you Bay Area Hospital with it, to do the first assessment, are the piling good? Can the trestle be used with it? And then the community got together, and I want to thank Larissa Ford, Shirley Thornton, Joe Kramer, and many others that helped put this grant together, this $175,000 grant for this next phase with it, and the community's very excited. But the importance of this project, it really helps tie Flower Bluff and town together. It's a 15, if you want to go to one of our premier nature areas, Oso Nature Preserve, you're in Flower Bluff, it's a 15-minute drive. What this will do is this will change that to a walk, a bike, or you can throw a fishing line out on that trestle, and not only does it do that, but you have, we've got the Pine Grove on the other side, that allows the people 15 minutes from town going to there, and that accessibility with it, it's multi-use. So, the trestle, you can fish off the trestle, you can take a bike across the trestle, you can jog across the trestle. I want to thank A&amp;M Corpus Christi. They're very supportive of this project with it, because it provides a bike path that you don't have to go down SPID, and you can take the existing back routes to A&amp;M. So, it hits so many buttons on there. Thanks parks, but particularly thank the community for all they did on moving these projects, and as I will be leaving this body, I hope that my fellow council members will help push the project forward. Now, Ben, I'm not going to look for much help from you or John, but Mike, you know, that is in the at-large area there with it, and Gil, I'm sure you'll be around, and it's close to you, and Billy, you're always supportive of this, and I know the mayor's fully behind it, but...
We will. It's a great news item.
We'll make sure we name it after you, sir.
No. Name it after Chief Roches, not me. Okay. Well, with that, I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Zanoni?
Great, yeah, thank you. I just want to add, and I said it earlier this morning, but the bond program that the vote is approved includes $500,000 for money to go towards the construction of this, so this is one of those quality life improvements that will have a lasting impact for many generations.
Right.
And like you said, Councilman, connecting two real, unique pieces of property in Corpus Christi, a great, great project, so, thank you.
Councilman, I just, I wanted to make sure I highlight, too, in the 10-year park and master plan, the top recreational priority was hike and bike trails, so that checks the box as well. Yes, sir.
And I want to echo quickly, that community, and with the leadership of Shirley, Joe, and...
Larissa Ford.
Larissa Ford, Shirley Thornton, Joe Kramer, and Larissa Ford, has really made this happen. It's not just about this grant, it is what they've done. I remember we were out there before they cleaned it up. We cleaned it up, too, but I'm saying the initiative were community members who said, we want to make this area better, and it's exactly what they have done. And you don't see that everywhere. You do not see that everywhere, so I commend them. Flower Bluff is obviously very special to me, but they really, they get their hands dirty, and they walk the walk. So, this is a wonderful project that we'll keep you posted on, Greg, but we'll move it forward. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Hernandez?
Considering our public comment, a person that talks about hike and bike trails, maybe it should be hike slash separate bike trail, maybe?
No, no, we've already got this going.
Well, I mean, but this is, this is not reflective of this particular, because it's only a trestle, right? You can't separate it, but, you know, I don't know if that is something that we need to look at. I know we've always thought of it as a singular thing. I never thought of it as a separate thing, but I know we're going to continue to have public comment on that, so just as a thought, maybe kind of what that looks like. Just, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 13 was the last item pulled by, I believe, Councilman Pusley, and that is a resolution relating to establishing the City of Corpus Christi's intention to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds relating to any capital expenditures from the proceeds of tax-exempt obligations.
Yeah, my question, Peter, was, of course, I don't think you or I either one were here when all this went down in 2018, but why is this still lagging from 2018?
Well, that's why we changed the process, Councilman. So, back in the prior bond programs, design was taken one project at a time, so this one was probably two years, three years before the design was finally let, and then it takes over a year to design it, and that brings us to four or five years later where we're at today. So, that's why the business process, we recommend it to be changed for the 2020 bond program, that's why every project was underdesigned five months after the election.
Okay.
Right. It's a good example of why we don't want to do this old way of doing it.
Why we don't want to repeat this.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that for public information mostly, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, so I think we're going to, for the first time this entire year, go to lunch on time. Don't speak too soon, Councilman. So, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. I don't believe we have executive session items, so we will break for a 45-minute lunch, and then we will return.
So item number 17 is first public hearing to discuss the annexation of County right-of-way for sections of County Road 43 and County Road 18, being approximately 9.78 acres located south of Farm to Market Road 2444, Carolyn Heights subdivision. Hi Dan.
Thank you. Good afternoon Mayor, council members. Daniel McGinn, Director of the Planning Department. The next two items are both public hearings for a proposed annexation of two county roads located within the London area just south of Staples. This is, for reference, kind of a location map. We have here's Crosstown as you would come north to south and then Staples here. The black line represents the current city limits. The subject roads are south of Staples identified here in these two yellow lines. We also have a water tank out there, if you've ever seen that, on Staples on the south side. There's a city water tank that designates that road. Of course, we have Botanical Gardens just outside once you cross the creek. And so we're, this proposal, 18 is the road that runs parallel to Staples and the 41 runs north-south. This is a closer look at the subject area. There is no action today, but state law does require that we hold two public hearings for this type of annexation. And so we will have to open and close each of those.
Okay.
And the purpose of this annexation is to provide continuity to the Carolyn Heights subdivision so that can also be annexed in the future. We're currently working with that applicant on an annexation petition.
Dan, I'm sorry, and where is that on your map?
Sure.
In relation to the road?
Here's Staples Street here.
Uh huh.
The Carolina Heights is this one right here.
Okay.
And then the road system will run
Right.
Like that. And here's our city limits line here that runs that way.
Okay.
And so the purpose of this is yes, to get that continuity to that tract. And so by taking in the county roads that we'll be able to achieve that. And then the petition for the Carolina Heights can then be processed because they're now connected to the current city limits. And so we're working with them, Development Services is also working with them on a zoning and reimbursement agreement. And so we're timing these so they can both, we're anticipating to go December 20th. So that's why we have kind of a set track. The annexation laws and everything require a certain amount of public notice and public hearings to meet certain dates. So that's kind of on that timeline to hit all the items on that particular council date in December. And so the county commissioners did, they heard this item. And so they've made the request for the city to annex those. So they're on board with the item. County Road 18 is a mile long and it's typical, this London and a lot of the south side was laid out in these one-mile square grids. And so that's one mile. And then this one is also a mile. There is no paved section within the County Road 15 right-of-way. There is a bit of a paved section in the 43, which is only paved, recently paved, that will just get you into that subdivision in the future. Again, that the tract A is the Carolina Heights property that's owned by Cypress Point Capital. That they have 37.44 acres and they'll be developing that into 28 lots. The total amount of the right-of-way that will be annexing here with this item is 9.7 acres. And again, we're just trying to get connection to that Carolina Heights subdivision. And then once connected, we can legally then annex that. This is just provides the section state law that we're following, that 43.1055. Again, this resolution is, you know, is the first step. Again, there's no decision being made today about the annexation. We simply just have to hold the public hearings. Here's a look at the schedule. We met with council back on the first November to direction due to the service plan. And now we're holding hearings and we'll have action on the 1220 council meeting for this item. So with that, I conclude the presentation and we just take any questions. And of course, we have to open and close and then open and close again.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. On, you know, after we looked at this the first time, I went back and thought about this because on the other side of Staples and County Road 41, when that area was annexed, we annexed that road or I think half of it. And, but now we're responsible for it, but it's basically a dirt road. So we're going to annex another dirt road with County Road 18, which means we'll be responsible for maintaining said road and also County Road 43. So have Public Works actually looked at these roads to see what, you know, because I mean, how are we going to do this in terms of addressing that? Because I know the county is going to be glad to give them to us so they don't have to maintain them anymore.
Well, kind of in the research here, so the County Road 41 right-of-way has actually been within the city limits. And so, but it is what we call, kind of in staff and discussion, a paper street. So there, even though you see dirt or Caliche there, we don't recognize it as a public road. It, there has to meet certain minimum requirements to even be, to get on the system for maintenance. And so we have lots of these paper roads. We have quite a bit on the island, Flower Bluff, Northwest has a lot. And so we've annexed those and we don't have a requirement or obligation to improve or maintain those. When those developers come in, that would be adjacent to the, you know, said road. They would then have the obligation to improve it to provide access to their site.
Okay, that didn't happen on County Road 41 on the other side of 2444. Developers developed that whole area and didn't do anything to that road.
If they came in today, yeah, things would be different. That project on the north, I know was developed, I think, late, mid to late 90s, I believe. And so the requirements would have been different then. If they were to plot today, we would ask them to make improvements. We'd like, we have a couple that are coming in on County Road 33 that will be asking for improvements on.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I always want to make sure that we're thinking long-term and then what the expectation is for those particular roads. Because if people are driving down them, you know, I still get calls on County Road 41, which, to your point, is a paper road. But people still have to drive on it and their house is right next to it. Somebody maintains it.
Sure. No, I've driven the London area and yes, there's definitely homes and different buildings, commercial establishments that are off these Caliche roads, but they're not necessarily recognized as public, public roads. They're just kind of existed, you know, there's no, nobody's maintaining those.
I hear you saying that. They're not considered public roads. But there's a, there's a road number to it, right? There's, you know, it's on a map. People that would, you know, that are everyday citizens are going to say, that's a road. And we're going to tell them, no, that's just a paper road? What does that, what does that mean?
Sure.
Well, I get that. But I mean, we're annexing this and we're just doing this little strip where the road's at. So it would be technically in the city and then the county absolves themselves of having to maintain them after that, right? After we annex it.
Yeah. When Dana first, paper street, always referring to is, we have the right-of-way. We have a right-of-way easement. We don't necessarily have a road there. But if we want to construct a road, we have the ability to because we have the right-of-way easement.
Okay. But what I'm saying in the meantime, while we're, say we have the right-of-way, the county gives, absolves themselves of it because we're annexing the right-of-way, that means no maintenance is going to be done on those roads. Not by the county, not, and then not by us because it's a paper road.
Correct. And that situation does exist within the city limits today. And it will be, when the developer that would be adjacent to that does finally come to develop the site, there will be a requirement that they improve it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see on the map today, Councilman, there's really no development around that 41 or 18 or 43 for that matter.
Is 18 a paper road or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they're all paper roads, but there's no development. So as development happens, roads will be built by the developer in part, right? So today, there's Caroline Heights subdivision, the access point will be up the well-improved South Staples Street, which is a tech stop facility.
Yeah, there is a house off of 18
Yeah.
In that area.
There is, there's a Caliche road that goes down 18 and there is a house here.
And then 41 doesn't even connect to it.
It's not a paved road.
41 doesn't even connect to 18. It kind of stops.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, to the Councilman's point, and it's really a yes or no, that we're going to be responsible for these roads, which we're not now.
Right.
And we're going to be. And just like 43
Yeah.
Over by London and the school was never, no one cared about that road. And then all of a sudden, we did because of all the development and we went in, you know, with them, but there were issues. So, I mean, these are going to be. there were issues. So, I mean, these are gonna be roads that are gonna be very critical to development out there. And we're, and there's nothing wrong with, yes, we're going to be responsible for them. But I think that's your point is, okay, everybody understand that, that we are basically, and we're gonna take on, what, three paper, two, three, three paper roads?
Two.
Two?
Two paper, yeah.
Two. Right. That we don't currently have, that we're gonna have to address eventually.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the goal is to, unfortunately, in our community, especially in this area, this continual development just outside the city limits. And generally, it tends to be large-lot development, which doesn't have much sense of community. Persons most likely are using city services but not paying city taxes. So this is an effort. We're trying to be more strategic, working with Development Services, utilities and so on, to get these properties into the city limits. So we can benefit from a property tax standpoint, but also a sense of community.
Right.
So this is one way we can do it. We looked at numerous scenarios of how we could
Right.
annex this into our city. The developer's willing to, which is really the only recourse we have given new state law. So there is a trade-off. That's the one we're talking about right now, which is a future liability.
Right.
But with our developer participation agreements that we have for road construction
Right.
and making sure we follow up on those on like twenty, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
We should be okay.
Yeah. Okay. Councilman Pusley.
Yep. My only question, Michael, is, not Michael, sorry.
Dan.
Dan.
Dan, is when we're doing this first and second public hearing on the same agenda for the same thing, right? Well, I've never seen that before.
The, the state law doesn't specify that the meetings have to be a two-separate meeting. So, and we're doing this at an effort because there is a, the statutes do lay out specific publication and timelines of when you can meet and when you can do your annexation item. So we've matched it up. So we're able to get this annexation completed by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Okay, well, good. Well, I just want to say I appreciate staff's working with, with the developer and coming up with this ideal. This is a great way to get this area moved into the city limits of Corpus Christi. They're gonna build a bunch of homes out here and that way we can take advantage of the ad valorem taxes that'll create. And the developer wanted to be annexed. They asked for this. So this is a good project and it'll, it'll go a long way in the future, helping as we move forward with expansion into that area.
Okay. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number seventeen? Okay, we'll close public hearing and I will, oh, there is no, no action. Okay. So does that serve as, okay, so one more for item number eighteen, for the second public hearing. I'll open public hearing. And if there's anyone who would like to make comment on item number eighteen, please come forth. Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing and move on to item number nineteen, which is a public hearing and first reading ordinance, amending ordinance number zero-two-four-two-seven-zero, which created the reinvestment zone number two, City of Corpus Christi or TURS number two on Padre Island. Heather?
Good afternoon, Council Mayor Heather Hurlbert, Director of Finance. So the item that you have before you today is stemming from recommendations made by the TURS two Board. So on October twenty-fifth, the Board met and we actually split the items up over, the meetings up over two days. How we had them on two separate dates, we started to make the, making the discussions that had to be covered on October twenty-fifth. And then we extended it and came back and finished up the discussions on November the first. And so the TURS has come to, it will be expiring at the end of this calendar year. And so the decision, there's a recommendation that the Board be, that the TURS, I'm sorry, that the TURS be extended until December thirty-first, twenty forty-two, which would be an additional twenty-year term. And with that extension, the county, Nuasis County, who also participates in the TURS, has requested that the Board include two additional members from the county. This would not be a change in the, the number of members on the Board. But we have two members, one that is the representative from Flower Bluff School District, who does not participate in the TURS. And the other would be from the Hospital District, which will be rolling off of the TURS because they are no longer eligible to participate in the TURS. And so those would be two additional Board members to be appointed by the City Council after a recommendation of Nuasis County. Because, just a reminder, the TURS is actually formed by the city. And so the TURS is the city's entity. And so Board members are appointed by City Council. Any other taxing entities participate in the TURS through an interlocal agreement for their contribution to the TURS, but they do have Board seats with the TURS. So the first motion that was made by the TURS Board is to recommend the extension of the TURS until December thirty-first, twenty forty-two. An additional motion was made to recommend the modification of boundaries to includes all portions of White Capid that are not currently, that are currently outside of the zone. So there is a couple of areas on the, kind of what I call the shoulders of White Capid that are not currently included within the TURS boundaries. And so the developer had requested that those be pulled into the boundary. The TURS Board has made that recommendation, that those parcels be included. Right now, those parcels are basically undeveloped. And so time was of the essence to include those within the boundary so that the tax year basis would be the basis as of January the first, twenty twenty-two. An additional motion was made to modify the boundaries to include areas recommended by Nuasis County, including Packery Channel, Nature Park, and Padre Ballet Park. So there's two areas there. One is over near the Packery Channel that is kind of a donut hole within the TURS. The other one is the area there, I believe that the TURS does not go all the way down to the Beach Access Road where Bali Park is. And so they've recommended that those be included. The Board did make that motion to make that recommendation. And then the final motion that was made on October the twenty-fifth was a motion to recommend amending the project and financing plan to include up to two million dollars for improvements to our Briscoe King Pavilion. This is a Nuasis County asset, which is a community gathering place that is in need of improvements. And so the Board did make the recommendation to amend the project and financing and plan to include that to, up to two million dollars. So then on November the first, the additional, the motion that was made there was to include up to thirty-six point four million dollars for ongoing maintenance for Packery Channel in the project and financing plan. So looking at the schedule of maintenance, there's an estimated one point five million dollars, which is needed on an annual basis to properly maintain Packery Channel, including dredging, maintenance of the canal, maintenance of the assets along the channel, along with the monitoring and beach nourishment. And so adjusted for an inflation amount would be thirty-six point four million dollars over the twenty-year period. In addition, the White Cap Preserve Developer has requested up to eleven point five million dollars for developer reimbursements for public infrastructure. These include public mobility bridges, nature trails around the preserve area, along with a bridge to connect the canal areas on Aquarius and Commodore. The Aquarius would be a small channel to, to connect the canal, the bridge on Aquarius, and then a bridge on Encantada, which would also help connect that area. And then also finally, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for an island mobility plan. There's been a study done, but we need to formulate a formal plan to look at pedestrian, golf cart, and marine mobility around the area. So what is asked of council today is to take action on the extension of the term, to extend the term to December thirty-first, twenty forty-two, to have the modification of the boundaries to include all portions of the White Capid that are not currently, that are currently outside of the zone. The modification for the boundaries for the council will help, for the county will have to come at a later date. To make those boundary modifications, we have to have the legal descriptions or the meets and bounds of that to include it within the ordinance. They are still in the process of doing the survey to get those. And so that will be brought back at a future date. But that motion still does stand that was made by the Board. And then the final is amending the project and financing plan to include the amounts for Packery Channel maintenance, to include the amounts for the developer reimbursements for the public infrastructure at White Cap Preserve, to include a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the island mobility plan, and then to include the two million dollars for improvements to our Briscoe King Pavilion. This is just kind of step one on the, or step one or two on the TURS extension. The Board, the TURS Board will then meet at future dates after the first of the year to look at the, to look at making more modifications to the project and financing plan, to look at future revenues, and see what future needs are on the island. And so what you will see is council coming forward after the Board has met is an action on the item to modify the boundaries for Nuasis County, to include Packery Channel and the, Packery Channel Nature Park and the Padre Island Ballet, to approve an interlocal agreement with Nuasis County. Like I said, the TURS is the city's legal entity, but the county and other taxing districts participate through an interlocal agreement. Nuasis County has asked that their participation be modified to be reduced from a hundred percent down to seventy-five percent for the next five years, and then reducing by five percent down to fifty percent for the second ten years. And so that interlocal agreement will reflect that. Then the Board will also look at, provide future recommendations for amendments to the TURS project and financing plan, also make a recommendation for the city contribution amount. We will continue modeling what the revenue will be based off of the future development that is already being proposed for the island. And the Board will make a recommendation on what contribution amount. We have talked a little bit about maybe seventy-five percent or fifty percent, but we'll bring that forward for council consideration. And then possible participation by Delmar. And Delmar is interested in participating in the TURS, but they have requested to see, to have the project and financing plan presented to their Board to understand what the money is gonna be used for. As we're need to get that process going before we can go before their Board to make that proposal. But they are definitely interested in participating based off of what those projects are. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Great. Let's see. Councilman Pusley?
Heather, if memory serves me correctly, the county's not only asking that their participation level be reduced, but that they wanted, is it two more members on the Board? Is that right?
That is correct. That is correct. And that was in that, that was in the motion to extend. We also had the wording in there about the two additional members. So we wouldn't have to change the number of members on the Board. It's just that we, the council would not appoint a Flower Bluff ISD representative or a representative from the Hospital District, and instead appoint two members or representatives from Nuasis County.
Okay. So the size of the Board doesn't change?
It does not change, no.
Okay. Thank.
Sure.
Councilman Hernandez?
Did you give a specific date on when you're gonna come back to make your financing recommendations in terms of what our participation should be?
So it'll be sometime after the first of the year. The TURS Board will need to meet, we are not gonna be meeting in December, but it'll be after the first of the year that the TURS Board would get back together.
We do have a calendar now, right, that we, well, no, that was TURS three. But we do have a calendar for TURS two.
Exactly.
Which meeting, which meeting is that going to be at?
It would be, well, the first meeting that is scheduled right now is in February.
So we're saying it's gonna be in the February meeting that you're gonna make that recommendation?
We'll have to see what all different, that'll be part of the discussion, yes.
Okay. But are we gonna vote on it, on that February meeting?
It depends. So to, we'll need to understand what the revenue is and then understand what the projects and the needs are on the island. So it depends on if that subject matter can all be covered within that February meeting. If not, we may have to extend that to March. But we wouldn't make a recommendation on the revenue contribution until we understand what the projects and needs are within the island.
So Delmar won't participate until this financial plan is put in place. So the further we delay, the more they'll delay?
Yes.
So it would make sense for us to do this sooner rather than later?
And that is the intent, yes.
Well, I'd almost want to say be specific about when that, that comes up. And if it should be February, the first meeting in twenty twenty-three, maybe that's something we should add to this motion. That, that's, and then also, they do not decide to participate. Will we still maintain a member from the Delmar Board on the, on the TURS Board?
No, you do not have to. It had been, they had, still had a member on the Board because they had participated for the first ten years of the TURS. But if they choose not to participate in this extension, then council could choose not to appoint someone from Delmar.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Councilman Smith?
Thank you. You know, this, this is a very important thing we're doing here. We all know the importance of Packery Channel to this community. And it's, it's great that we're actually setting aside, all we're budgeting, thirty-six million dollars for the next twenty years of, with it to provide that maintenance for that channel. And we have a legal obligation to do it. When we put the channel in, that part of that contract with the other agencies is we maintain the depth of that channel. So this gives us a funding source outside of general revenue or anything else, a constant funding source, so we can make our obligations to it. What's the importance of the Packery Channel? A couple on there. Water quality with it. You cannot get enough fresh water going into that, or water circulation going into the bay. Then recreational use on it. This is widening the ability for recreation. Right now, the channel is used very much for recreational boat traffic along, the banks are full of fishermen all the time. This goes into the circulation with it. So it's getting this taken care of for the next twenty years. You know, after we're all long gone, and in a couple of decades, it'll be back up again. But we've, we've done our job today. That's thirty-six million dollars. Now, another big portion of this is the White Cap Preserve. This is a development that depending at today's prices, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred and fifty million dollars of new tax base with it. That's a huge number on there. It's about four percent of our existing tax base. This is a stepping stone for it. This is very achievable. As we look at other beach destinations on there, really, those numbers run a little bit low. Port Aransas, for example, right now, it has four billion dollars in valuation with six miles of beach. We're sitting at about three billion with fourteen miles of beach. So this is what it's doing. And not only is it the White Cap Preserve, but it's other places on the island. We've got two mobility, we call them mobility bridges, Commodores and Encantada. They're, they're not part of the White Cap Preserve, but they bring in the navigation system. Right now, it's choppy. So that ties it all together. This is what's gonna make the island the Venice of the Gulf Coast. You'll be able to have navigation that you didn't have before, and most importantly, water quality. Those canals right now, they're dead-end canals on there. They actually run aerators to try to keep the oxygen levels up there, to keep a healthy environment. With this, we're gonna see that circulation going through there, the tidal push with it. We have another form of mobility that this is gonna cover. So we're all used to cars now. But the pedestrian mobility, bicycles, golf carts, walking on there, it's gonna be a much more accessible area in this community in Corpus Christi. So you'll be able to get on a bike, walk, golf cart, whatever you have, and go there. The island right now does not have sidewalks, at least in the White Cap community. Three miles of nature trails in a nature preserve is another thing that's happening here. So this really puts our coastal community on that next level. And I think that this city will be reaping for decades to come because of what we're doing, this council is doing here today, to take our community, our coastal community in the twenty-first century. So I want to thank you, Heather. I want to thank staff, all the support we've got. For people out there that are watching and in our TURS Board, we've gone through a lot of the particulars with this. So we're not spending near as much time as the of the particulars with this, so we're not spending near as much time as the hours we've spent, uh, going over all the projects in there. And then the one last thing, I would like to thank Nuasis County, our partner in this project. We work very closely with them on there, and, uh, this, this is not just a city project, but this is this region, uh, this area's project with it. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. I think that's all the questions. We will go ahead and open up a public hearing. Is there any public comment for item number 19? Okay, there being none, we'll close public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Mayor, Mayor, I'd like to abstain from this until we get the financing plan.
Okay. The motion carries. Item number 20, uh, individual, let's see, okay, I'm sorry, um, section, um, L, individual consideration items 20 and 20 through 22. Item number 20 is a resolution approving a chapter 380 agreement with Net Zero Carbon One LLC in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for the development of an electro fuels processing plant located near 5238 Union Street.
Good afternoon. Mike Culberson with your Corpus Christi EDC, here with good news. That's the only time I bring here, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
So, um, if we can bring up the, uh, the presentation, so let me just talk about the net zero for quickly. Um, so they are going to take the off gases from the refinery, so they, they have that, that connection right there at the Howard Plant, and, uh, if you remember from two weeks ago when you were doing that, it's across 37 from the Gulf, Greyhound Park. Um, so they have an ability to bring in those off gases, and with that, they are going to use these gases to make either a light aviation or diesel fuel that will, they'll be able to move on down the road, which will reduce the CO2 that is in the air at that point, and then reuse it. These are part of the, the things that we talked about, carbon sequestration, uh, getting, reusing carbon in, in a second, in a secondary sense. Uh, when you think about carbon, think about the density, the energy density that you're going to have, and this is one of the ways that we can help, you know, our, our, our industrial district here, our city, our nation, the world, just think, you're doing this for the world. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. But, but, but kidding aside, this is where we need to go. I mean, we've talked about this, you know, we work really hard, the industries here work really hard on, on main, on being in entertainment, and entertainment is so, so important, uh, when you take a look at projects looking here as opposed to Houston or into the Baton Rouge area. And we do it because our industries are working hard. Now, we have a new player who's coming in, using some of the old players, you know, their, their infrastructure already built, to bring this up. So you can see that there's going to be, now, this is, you know, a, a pilot plant, uh, 25 million with, uh, 25 full-time jobs with an average salary of 97,000. Uh, I already gave him my resume, so don't bother, you know, so I have one after. Um, and what we're looking for is trying to match expenses to revenues. You know, the first part, they're not really doing anything, they're just construction, so they're asking for a rebate. No rebate, so they have to pay their property tax, and then they get a rebate on that of 100% during construction for the first year, and then whether they're in construction or not, but they will be finished, uh, then they get 50% over the next four years. Um, I ran, I ran the, uh, the economic model, and it's in your package, just so you know. Basically, it shows the, uh, the, the cost for the, uh, city of Corpus Christi and the net benefits. Okay? So what we do is we take this, is what does it cost the city to have an industry that we do? Now, we think of water, you know, water's a, a push item, uh, and all of the other things that we go. So, right, you can't, we charge for water exactly what it costs us, so, but these are the ways that we can have and have companies do it. And we've limited them to 500,000. So as we go through in the net benefits, you can see on the other side, there's really not a perfect, um, label for this, so I put abatement. The abatement, as I run through my model, is going to be less than 400,000, but we capped it at 500, just so you know. Uh, we can put in, they believe that they'll invest more than 25 million, but, you know, we've settled on 25, and I will tell you, as, as you probably well know, uh, as things come on to the tax rolls, you can, I can go in and do compliance on how much they invested, but, you know, if, if the appraisal district, you know, values it lower, there's not really a lot for the company can do. So these are the things that we're looking at. But this is what it will do for us. Think about this, you know, we're bringing a new technology to our region. You heard about the King Ranch capturing, um, cow emissions, you know, and their 106,000 acres, um, but it can, it could lead to a larger project. They're not promising that, nor have I asked them to. Uh, it addresses our air quality concerns because it takes CO2 out of the, uh, out of the atmosphere. Uh, it's the first one of its kind in, in America. There is one in, uh, in Canada, and you know, we, you, us will be on the cutting edge of this. Every time they talk about this, and there's the press releases everywhere, we worked with the city, you know, on, on theirs, if, if they wanted to do that, you know, every time they talk about this plant, they're going to talk about Corpus Christi. And, you know, people are thinking of Corpus Christi, you know, we, we lead the nation in, in oil export. We, we have three refineries, we actually have four, but, you know, we don't really count Lyndale, although, you know, it does a lot of stuff for us. Um, but we all think about this in refineries, and now we have another way to capture this, and this is the first part. You know, I was at a Department of Energy workshop on, uh, on carbon last week at the Heart Research Center, and one of the things they talked about is there is nothing that's going to get us to net zero. There's nothing. There's not one thing. A whole bunch of things we can, and this is, this is how we start. And this is what we're, this is what we're needing, this is what they're needing to get this project on, on vent. And it's inside your city limits, and after that, it's fully taxable, and we stand by, and make no doubt, I am, if I haven't made that clear, uh, you know, I'm very much in favor of it. I think this is a great project. I've worked on 56 billion in my, uh, since I've been at the EDC. I'm not saying it's all because of me, but last man standing.
That's a good.
I do have Roger Harris, COO for, uh, for, uh, Net Zero, if, uh, if you have any questions.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Uh, now, on the emission side, that the city of Corpus Christi does not regulate emissions. Buck, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Uh, but just, uh, can you brief us where you are with your TCEQ, uh, the regulatory agency that does regulate?
Yes, sure. Uh, Mayor, council members, thanks again for your interest in this project. Uh, we made application to the TCEQ under permit by rule, which is the correct application for this size facility in June, and had that approved late July.
Okay. And what will be your net emission profile? Will you be actually taking, uh, the CO2 that you're currently emitting? Will you be using some of that?
Uh, so as Mr. Culberson said, the, the project itself will be utilizing CO2 that is currently coming out of the off gases that HEP collect. That CO2 would typically just be, uh, released into the atmosphere. This project will be repurposing that CO2 into liquid fuels, and so the net emissions in that, in that area will be reduced in terms of CO2.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have less emissions because of, of this new project?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's the intent of the project.
Well, well, thank you, Roger, and, and, uh, Mike, I, I fully agree with your comments. This is an exciting, uh, project, and, and we know that we've got to hit it by multiple choices. Jets don't run well on batteries. And part of your, you're going to be doing those mid-level distillates, uh, on there, and, and I guess we all drove our cars down here today, so we need that transitional type of fuel, and that's kind of what you're going to be providing, right, Roger?
Uh, that's correct. Our, our key focus is on decarbonizing, uh, transport, transport fuels, which are very difficult to just, uh, substitute with other tech, technologies, specifically the aviation and heavy diesels.
Yeah, okay. Well, that, thank you very much.
Well, thank you once again for your support.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, just out of curiosity, uh, you know, because I'm not familiar with how this is going to operate, will you be using any, any water resources from the city?
So we, so electrolysis does use water, but we won't be using city water. At the moment, our water is sourced from excess that HEP has, and so this won't be, this won't be tapping into city, city water resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, I, that was going to be my question, Peter, is how much water this, because all of these carbon recapture programs require lots of water, so, uh, which is in short supply at this point. So do we have the capacity to support this, I guess is my question.
I don't, I don't have the answer. I don't know, Mike, if you've looked into that, Culberson, or Roger?
So, so our, our water is sourced from HEP directly, not through the city. Um, I can't speak too much to their internal process, but, uh, but, but that, they're not, that, that water is excess, I believe, that they had, so we, we're not taking any of our water requirement from the city itself.
Okay, H, HP?
Oh, sorry.
Havellina?
Havellina, the site that we, uh, that, that we building the sun. We have several lines coming across. CO2 is obviously the feed source, but we have other utilities, including water source directly from them, not from the city.
So are you taking over the whole Havellina complex, or just a piece of it?
No, sir. We've, we've just got a small piece allocated to our facility. They'll be operating theirs next door, and we, uh, we, we, we just utilizing their CO2 and utilities.
Okay. But you're, you're going to use water that they currently have already been allocated from the city, and it's excess?
Right. That's, uh, that, that's where it's sourced from, from their, from their facility.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Smith.
I, I think one thing that wasn't mentioned, now, you also have plans for a 10-megawatt power plant that will be using part of the streams?
Uh, that's correct. So the 10, the 10 megawatts that's directly, uh, allocated to the electrolysis, which uses, uh, let's see, which uses, uh, uses renewable power to drive, to drive that and to, to generate green hydrogen for the project.
Okay. And, and I, I guess in the water discussion now, plants like Havellina and our other refineries that they, in their cooling process, they go through so many cycles, and, and then they discharge them. So this, if, if that's what Havellina is doing, and, and we're talking tens of millions of gallons a day that that's done with, so there's a, a secondary, a, a better utilization of our existing water supply. Uh, I, I don't know if you're doing that in your process, but, uh...
So I wouldn't want to, I, I wouldn't want to speak to their process and where they're sourcing it from, but, uh, but it is coming out of, it's coming out of their water loop, and so I, I think addresses specifically what you allude to.
Yeah, and which is known in the industry as your blowdown water, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all the questions. So with that, um, let's see here, I will ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 20? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve item number 20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
So 20 years from now, you'll think, hey, I was there on that day.
Exactly.
Well, 20 years from now, I'm going to be in that long sleep.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 21 is an ordinance, a very good news item, ordinance authorizing a construction contract to Spalglass Contractors, Inc., Corpus Christi, Texas, for CCIA international, or I'm sorry, terminal rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed $17,941,349 and 64 cents.
That's mouthful.
Yay! We're so happy about this.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Peter, um, this is an exciting project. This is something that, that we've been working on since Tyler and I got here two and a half years ago, and finally seeing it come to fruition, so we're really excited about it. Um, we do have a quick presentation. Uh, we can just walk you through a, a couple of these slides here.
Mayor, Mayor, motion to approve.
No, no, we've got to watch this. They've worked hard for this. We need to see this.
That's the only benefit I get from being a red raider down here in Corpus Christi.
Oh, wow, good, yeah.
Uh, next slide, please. So obviously, the project location is the entire terminal. Next slide. Um, so yeah, so the scope of the base bid includes the following: renovations to the first and second, uh, public restrooms, uh, both in the public and secured areas of the terminal. Uh, it'll also include a nursing room on the secured side of the terminal, as well as a SARA, a service animal relief area, which is now required by the FAA, so we're really excited to get this.
Love that.
Yeah. Um, so the, um, it's also going to, we're going to be recovering, uh, the external roof sections. Um, our, our roof is 20 years old, and it needs to be, needs to be replaced. Um, we're going to be doing all the, uh, the, the window wet glazing to make those seals better. Uh, they, they leak pretty bad right now. Uh, the, uh, emergency management system for the entire building, as well as replacing our HVAC cooling towers, which are actually older than the current terminal. They were from the original terminal, so they're about 40 years old, I believe. Um, alarm control panel, uh, electric generator switchgear, so just a lot of infrastructure parts, as well as beautification.
Right.
Um, some of the alternatives that we asked the, uh, the contractors to bid on, uh, the first one, which we are going to do, is a second floor outdoor patio. Um, it's basically between gates one and three, and there's a couple of reasons we wanted to do that. Uh, there are certain times of the day where we're out of space in the terminal, and, um, this is going to give us about 50 to 60 more seats, so people can go outside, enjoy the fresh air here in Corpus Christi. We get about 300 days of sunshine and no, no sense in wasting it, so, uh, we're real excited about that. It's also going to have a small pet relief area outside, too. Uh, it'll be located right by the bar, walking outside onto the patio, so, uh, that should be a little bonus for people. Um, and then, uh, also, we're going to recover the, the roofing, uh, at the front of the terminal. Y'all have probably seen, I know Peter's seen that, the, when the terminal was built, they didn't teach the airport employees how to clean it properly, and so they used bleach, and it, it, it dented the, the material pretty bad. And so over time, all the pollen and everything else just gets stuck in there, and the only thing you do is put more bleach on it, and, and it's, it's not going well. So we're just going to re-code it with a new PVC roof and make sure people are trained on how to clean it next time. Um, and then, uh, the curbside security improvements, we're not going to recommend at this time. Tyler and I have figured out a way we can do that, uh, kind of one section at a time. Uh, it's not anything that's, you know, we're, we're not that concerned with people driving their vehicles into this airport. It's, uh, something we need to be thinking of, right? So we're going to, we're going to make some adjustments to the, the crosswalks, but more on a one, one-on-one basis versus putting in this package, because it was pretty expensive. Uh, and then the electric vehicle charging stations, uh, these will be, uh, generic, so all vehicles will be able to charge, not just Tesla or Ford or something like that, so. No, sir. Um, when we get to electrification of aircraft, we will be charging for that service, but for cars, we're not. So at, at some point, we're going to have electric aircraft, um, at CCIA, and we're planning... Well, I, I, I think, I think you and I will have our choice. Yeah, I think we'll have our choices, but I don't know that Tyler will have a choice someday. Um, but this is a artist rendering of our second floor patio. That's a four-foot mesh at the bottom and an eight-foot glass, so it's a 12-foot-high wall, basically. Uh, obviously TSA had to approve the design. Uh, we started to see this more and more at other airports. Uh, it gives people a little sense of peace to go outside and get some fresh air, just not be crammed in turmoil, especially with all the diversions we have here from Houston. So, uh, we're real excited about this feature. And then there's just another artist rendering. Uh, those will be planner seats all the way around the outside, so that's where we're going to get the majority of our seating from, and then we're going to get some of that, uh, uh, all-weather material for the, for the seating, kind of the Adirondack chair style. Should be nice. Next slide. And then this is a, a artist rendering of our restrooms. Uh, we spent a lot of time looking at color palettes and tones. Uh, architect Corrigan out of Dallas helped us pick some of these, uh, but we made sure of these, uh, but we made sure it's all maintenance-free, uh, you know, floor-to-ceiling tile, as well as little things like the soap dispensers, right now, our custodians have to crawl up underneath the sink to change those out, this is going to have a centralized system in the janitor's closet, and it'll pump soap to each dispenser, and they just have to pour it into one vat, so it's, uh, much easier, uh, floor-to-ceiling restroom stalls, with the tush lights outside, so you know if it's occupied, so it'll be a much, almost like a VIP experience for our customers, it's going to be great.
And the bathroom.
And then this is the front, uh, it's going to be a little more colorful than that, that's kind of a drab artist rendering, but, um, we're going to make sure they're, um, signed appropriately, so, you know, keep people from walking in the wrong restroom, which we see occasionally today.
Construction schedule, um, we're hoping to be, uh, completely finished by quarter two
of 2004, and, uh, so hopefully summer 2024. I think there's one more, yeah, and so we are going to be sending out a press release if it's approved today, uh, or after the second reading, I guess, um, and then we will also be, uh, setting up, you know, media updates and tours and things like that, so if anybody wants to come out and look at it while it's under construction, be happy to, happy to tour you around. I believe that's everything.
That's it.
Questions?
Okay, Councilman Smith?
Thank you, thank you, Kevin and Tyler, so, uh, you didn't talk about funding, where's most of the money coming from, on this one?
Well, the good news is, about 90% of it's coming from the FAA, um, we're having to dip into our, because we have to, some of it's actually 95% funded by the FAA, and some of it's 90%, we combined a whole bunch of different kinds of grants to make this possible, um, so we're, uh, using about 1.2 million from our fund balance.
And, and the fund balance is just generated off your normal air, uh, airport traffic, it's, it's not general fund money, or?
Correct, yeah, there's no taxpayer dollars going into the airport at all.
So we're going to have a, a new thing with the SARAH, the pet restrooms on there, are you going to have your genders, or they unisex?
They will be unisex animal relief areas, sir.
So, so the animals don't have to self-identify?
No, they do not.
Okay.
Austin, I hope, uh, yeah, okay, guys, I really appreciate all the work you're doing, and so now we can bring all those airlines that want a service down there, and, you know, we've got this first-rate facility, correct?
Yeah, it, it certainly helps, when they see us putting money back into the terminal.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and, and, you know, I want to just remind everyone, you guys are doing a stellar job, since you've gotten here, you've, you've, you made this happen, and, and there are so many other things, we appreciate that very much, but we also recognize, and you know this, you know this coming from where you're coming from, you know this when you're at the conferences visiting, we're competing with people who did all this, a long time ago, so, keep that in mind, it's a great day, it is a new day for, for, for the airport, for sure.
Absolutely.
But we, when you come here to say, we need more, and here's why, we need to remember, we're not, we're trying to catch up here, in, in so many different ways, and we recognize that, so no, we realize you are who knows best, in terms of what you're requesting, what you're needing, and the tools, and that's our job, is to give that to you, we couldn't be happier, this is such a big deal, this is so important, and this puts our airport, it is giving more pride in saying, the Corpus Christi International Airport, you're truly making that happen, so thank you very, very much for all you do, I've seen you all in action, so I know.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and we couldn't do it without you and the council, and obviously Peter and Steve, I mean, we, we feel supported, and that just makes our job a lot easier.
That's right, well, you are, thank you, Councilman Pusley?
Yeah, uh, when, when we built the new, uh, county airport terminal building, and these, these grants from TexDOT Aviation are wonderful, uh, because we, well, ours was a little smaller expenditure, we spent a million dollars, but they put up 900,000 of that million dollars, so it was a great deal, but in our instance, because they were the major funding arm, they oversaw construction and had somebody on-site every day, are they doing that same sort of thing?
No, this is actually, uh, an FAA grant, so TexDOT, I, I believe they only do general aviation airports, um, so that's probably why you had them, um, but ours will be overseen by our, uh, engineering team, as well as our, uh, as well as, as well as our consultants.
Well, the, the money through TexDOT Aviation comes from FAA, so it's just, it's the same thing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wondered if they, they were going to put up that same, uh?
No, they don't, they don't, they don't do any oversight, as far as that goes, they, they obviously approve the projects, but they don't, uh, get involved with the day-to-day construction.
Okay, all right, I want to go back to the electric car charging station just a moment, uh, so how many of those are we going to have?
I believe five.
Okay.
Five in each lot.
So I've been reading a lot about how much it costs, in dollars, to recharge a car, have we thought about what that cost is going to be over the course of a year?
I, I, I haven't looked into it, um, I can tell you, we're looking at powering it through solar, um, so we're hoping that, uh, we'll, we'll have solar that will be providing that electricity, and not?
Yeah, I can't believe Councilman Hernandez is not all, all over this, but, Peter, I mean, I'm, I'm being serious.
Yeah, I'm hearing you, Councilman.
I've been reading a lot about this, and it's, it's expensive to recharge a car.
Right, I'm trying to think who would pay for it ultimately, the, the traveler? People parking, I mean, we could cover it through our rates if we needed to. Right, it'd be persons using the airport, but still, let's take a look, I'll take a look at it with Kevin, and see what is the annual incremental increase?
Yeah, because it could be several thousand dollars.
Right.
In the course of a year.
It would make our flights less competitive, you know, because somebody has to pay for it. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we have had a lot of requests for it, from our customers, so that's kind of the reason we?
No, I, I agree, it's, it's a service, I, I enjoy parking under those nice shaded structures when I have to travel, but, uh, but I don't ask anybody to put gasoline in my car when I go out there.
I hear you, I hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good question.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I was just going to suggest that for those, uh, charging stations, you put them in the paid section of the parking lot, as opposed to the, you know, I think we give, what, an hour free now?
Uh, three hours free.
Three hours free, you don't want them in the free section, you want them in the?
That's a very good point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, I think that's all the questions and comments, so I will go and open, uh, public comment, is there anyone here who would like to comment on item number 21? Okay, there being no one, we will close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
There's already a motion, there's already a motion.
Okay, we have a second, Councilman Pusley, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, the motion carries, thank you, Kevin, thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, our last, no, it's not, our last item, okay, close, another good, these are, gosh, three good news items in a row, item number 22 is a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute an advanced funding agreement with the state of Texas, acting by and through the Texas Department of Transportation for the Highway Bridge Replacement and Rehabilitation Program to replace or rehabilitate the Yorktown Mud Bridge and Ocean Drive Bridge. Hello, Gabe?
Counsel, uh, Mayor, uh, Gabe Ronohosa, Assistant Director of Public Works, here to present the advanced funding agreement for the TexDOT Highway Bridge Replacement and Rehabilitation Program. Uh, so the two bridges, as the mayor mentioned, is the, what we call locally the Mud Bridge there on Yorktown, just east of Rodfield, right before you get into Flower Bluff, and then the second one is the Ocean Drive over Oso Bay, so this is just east of the university, uh, right before you get onto the Naval Air Station. So the project scope, so the Highway Bridge Program is a federal-aided program, uh, that provides funding to enable states to improve the condition of the highway bridges through rehabilitation, replacement, and systematic preventative maintenance, so these two are going to be total replacements, uh, so there's not going to be rehab, so it's going to be ocean, uh, the Ocean Drive Bridge will be replaced, uh, lane for lane, uh, the Yorktown Bridge, the, uh, total project cost you see in here is for a widening, a height, uh, increase, and also a four-to-five lane bridge, so that's the project cost you see for the Yorktown Bridge, so this resolution will authorize the execution of the FAA with TexDOT for the bridge replacement on Ocean Drive and Yorktown, so this will authorize the, and, and there's an option of, you know, you can pay, you know, monetary funds, or you can have in-kind projects, so, uh, what the city, uh, is requesting, and TexDOT has approved, is doing in-kind projects, so this is the equivalent match project to satisfy the funding matching requirements, so on the next slide, you'll see the total project costs, the TexDOT participation, and then the city participation, so on the city participation, that's where the in-kind projects are going to come into play, so with the Yorktown Project, uh, we have the existing Lavoyia Creek, uh, so the Holly Bridge work that we're doing for Lavoyia Creek will be used for the Yorktown Project, uh, Ocean Drive, we're going to use, uh, Nielsian Exhibit C, there's almost 46 other improvements to offsite, what TexDOT calls offsite bridges, guardrails, scour improvements, um, riprap improvements, so we have a list of projects to cover that cost, uh, for the Ocean Drive Bridge, um, and then TexDOT will be responsible for the entire design and construction of the project with the expectation of Ocean Drive going in FY '25, and Yorktown going in FY '26 to So staff recommends approval of this resolution, I'd also like to, uh, say with the Ocean Drive Bridge, we are going to, um, have interaction with our stakeholders, the university and NAS, uh, so we'll be definitely in coordination with them with that bridge replacement.
Okay. Okay, and Gabe, so for clarity, we own those bridges?
Yes, ma'am, we're responsible.
I thought that was, I thought it was TexDOT, I, I mean, as far as the Mud Bridge, so it's, they're ours.
Correct, they're both ours.
Interesting, I thought it was TexDOT, okay, this is great news, I mean, this is absolutely wonderful, because we have $20 million, just for the public to remember, $20 million for reconstruction of Yorktown from Rodfield to, to the bridge, and now we're going to have a beautiful bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
And we only need $60 million, as I look over to Peter, to finish the streak, wonderful, this is great, great news, uh, Councilman Hernandez?
Okay, on your timing for the Mud Bridge, you have 2026 to go out to bid.
Correct.
I believe it was our intent to do in the 2024 bond, the, the widening of Yorktown going from the bridge to, I guess, further down into, to Laguna, Laguna Shores, I'm, I'm not sure how far we'd go down, I guess it depends on how much money we can, we can put into it, but if it's going to be in 2026, I mean, that might kind of, that doesn't quite line up with our?
I think it would, because usually if you pass it in '24, by the time you go to design, by the time you go out for bid, they might actually be going out to bid at the same time, uh, so they might actually be running, uh, pretty close, uh, with that bond '24.
So you would want the construction done at the same time, or, I mean, are you trying to phase it, or?
I think, I think you could phase it where, you know, either, uh, either one goes first, either the bridge or the roadway, uh, because you could?
Seems to me the bridge would need to be done first, because if not, you'll have a?
Yes, I would suggest that, because definitely they're going to be widening it, uh, so your bridge returns are going to be a lot longer than what they are right now, uh, so it'd probably be a, a good idea to get the bridge done first.
So it may be one of those things like we did with Yorktown this time, where we did the design in one cycle, and then the, the actual construction in the next cycle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Well, thanks, I, I have to agree, this is great news, if we look at this, uh, on there, here's $33 million, um, coming to us, thank you, TexDOT, with it, we just approved $92 million in, over, across this city, and we've got these two projects that, one-third of our total bond, uh, on there, and we all know that, uh, both these bridges, uh, they're, they're in their last stages on there, and our corrosive environment with it, and particularly Mud Bridge, York, Yorktown, that's an off-systems, uh, in the TexDOT, um, nomenclature, but, uh, the, the traffic on Yorktown where it really picks up is, is on the west side with it, where we'll have the four lanes, and e, even if we make the improvements on the east side, that, uh, you know, I think they'll be coming in close enough, and, th, think about it this way, that's a $20 million project, if, if we weren't able to get this bridge on the off-systems, we wouldn't be wa, uh, widening, uh, Yorktown on, on the Flower Bluff side until we got the bridge done, and so that would have pushed that in the 2030s, so here, we've got a, you know, $20 million, thanks to the work that everybody did, getting this on the list, so thanks, Gabe, thanks, Peter, thank Mayor, uh, Council for supporting this project.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, uh, with that, I'm gonna, did we do public comment yet, or not? No, we didn't, right, I'm sorry? Oh, yes.
So this funding has been approved, or we're just asking them to consider this?
No, it's been approved, so as soon as they get this advanced funding agreement, they'll go to plan and design.
They being?
TexDOT.
TexDOT, okay, so they'll completely handle the project, design, construction, supervision, everything, on both projects?
Yes, sir.
You can't get better than that. We're going to approve quickly. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And the last good news item!
Point of order, Mayor, did, who did the, the motion to approve?
There was no motion in second.
If that's the case, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Was there not?
No.
Greg, I thought somebody over here did. Okay, so who, who wants to make the motion?
I already did.
Yeah, I'll record Greg and Mike, I think, or Roland, either one.
I, I made the motion to approve.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, last, uh, good news item, another one.
Good news, good news.
Text, we'll have to read it, item number 22 is Texas State Aquarium update to be given by Jesse Gilbert, President and CEO.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager's staff, uh, for giving us the opportunity to give a quick update on the aquarium, how things are going, uh, what the rescue center is shaping up to be, and a little bit about where we, we see the future headed, so we have a quick presentation on, um, where things are at, uh, real quickly, we, we kind of start with, uh, next slide, please, the, we're the official aquarium of the state of Texas, and so I think that's important, we always make sure that that, that's out there, we are the largest aquarium in the state of Texas, we will always be the largest state of the, uh, aquarium in the state of Texas, and in Texas, that matters, so we, we continue to?
Yes, it does.
To has, have that designation, you'll see with the growth of the rescue center, and some exciting initiatives that we'll announce next year, we continue to, to grow, uh, we voted the fifth-best aquarium in North America, so on top of the largest aquarium in Texas, we're one of the best in the country, and in 2022, we think we'll end around 514,000 guests, so, this will be a, a great year, won't be kind of the record of 2021, that was a bit of an anomaly, uh, but so far, I think 2022 is looking good, 2023, uh, forecast is good, so, next slide, is our economic impact, we do this study once a year, and we wanted to get these figures in front of you, we just recently got this completed, our economic impact for Corpus Christi in just 2021 was $151 million, it's the largest single-year impact we've ever had, uh, over the last 10 years, cumulatively, it's 584 million, so just over half a billion dollars in the last 10 years, uh, we've supported about 1,200 jobs in the area, salaries of about 43 million, just in taxing entities locally, uh, we're sitting around 11 and a half million in 2021, and 7 million for the state, so what started as this, the small regional aquarium in Corpus Christi 32 years ago, has really turned into not only the largest aquarium in Texas, one of the best in the country, but certainly, uh, continuing to, to impact the area from an economic standpoint, and making this a, a great place to live, so, this is what the aquarium is doing now, on the next slide, you'll see our wildlife rescue program, and we believe that this program really is continuing to make this a great place to live, one of the unique things about Texas is that connection to nature, that connection to wildlife, when we, when we walk around the aquarium, we talk to guests, it's because they fish, they go to the beaches, they hunt, people like nature in Texas, and so we, we envision a resilient wildlife, uh, here in the, in the state and on the Gulf Coast, so next slide is how we're doing that, and what the rescue program looks like, how do we prepare, so how are we preparing ourselves, and I think most importantly, how are we preparing the next generation, we want to make sure that we've got the next biologists, the next researchers, the next pipe fitters, the next mechanic, it takes all of that to run an aquarium, so we need to make sure that we've got a workforce ready for South Texas, how do we respond, we're in the middle of an emergency response now, we'll talk about that, uh, here in a minute, so how do we respond, how do we continue to build that portfolio, and ultimately, how do we recover these populations and the habitat, this graph speaks to what the, the rescue program has done since 2005, it's a very, very normal program up until 2017, and that was Hurricane Harvey, that was the catalyst for the rescue program, and you can see the peaks there, we're actually on the peak right now, when you look at the graph, I think some people will interpret that as wildlife are facing more perils, but, but we're looking at it in a different way, and what we're really seeing is that the populations in the coastal bin are doing better, because the, the city, the county, the state has really put some emphasis in making sure these populations are doing good, and so we had winter weather, we had tropical weather in the early 2000s, but you're now seeing the populations of a size that, that, that make this happen, so the next slide shows our wildlife rescue program, just in size, we are the largest coastal wildlife rescue program in the state, and probably one of the largest in the country, um, we are the only facility in the state that can do marine mammals, birds, and sea turtles, so we're the only place, you'll see all of these in one rehabilitation setting, uh, and we've taken in about 8,400 animals, released almost 4,000 back into habitat, so it is a very, very active program, um, we know what that feels like, and what that looks like, 3,000 turtles is, uh, you'll have all the scars from that, but? like. 3,000 turtles is, you'll have all the scars from that. But if you go to the next slide, this will show you kind of what visually that does look like. So next slide is Kim's Ridley's. Kim's Ridley, most endangered sea turtle in the world. They nest right here in Padre Island in northern Mexico. These turtles are actually from Boston. So they were hatched in Texas or Mexico. They, they made the mistake of going north. They got caught in a northern winter. They got cold stunned. And because of our capacity and what the government knows this program can do, those animals were flown back to Texas to get warmed up, to be cared for, and released back into Gulf. So this is on the county beach on Padre Island. So it's really showing what the program can do. Now it's got a national brand to it. The, the federal government is, is understanding what this, what the capacity of this program is. So in the next slide is, so next slide is a dolphin calf. This shows you the breadth of this program. This was a calf that was orphaned on Goose Island State Park. His name is Goose. He was malnourished, sunburnt, mom had passed away on the beach. This animal's made a full recovery, got a private jet flown out to the, the Florida Keys. It wasn't electric, it was fuel. And, and so he's doing well. But it really shows what this program can do, not only from the standpoint of we can take a wide variety of animals in, but this story played across the country, and actually played across the world. And it really is starting to put the coastal bin in Corpus Christi in, in the light of, this is a community that understands the importance of industry, understands the importance of economic development. But you can have a robust and healthy wildlife population. It really is becoming a model for that. And then the final video, the next slide, is what we're in the midst of today. We are in a historic event for the Texas State Aquarium. Lagerhead sea turtles are stranding in massive numbers from Mustang Island up to Mata Gorda. We have had to rent 26,000 square feet from the port of Corpus Christi to take these turtles in. This is the largest sea turtle event we've ever been through. So this eclipses the historic event of 2021 during the winter storm. These turtles are massive. They're 200, 250 pounds. They're very aggressive.
Wow.
But this is history-making. So this media actually went out today. It'll go national tomorrow. It really shows what this program is capable of doing. And again, this is because the national, the federal government really does understand the capacity of this program. So this is what it looks like. This is literally going on today. And, and we're able to respond and recover these animals. So the next slide, we're taking the busiest program, and we're now putting it into one of the largest spaces in the country. So we not only have the capacity of, of these animals, but now we'll be in a 26,000-square-foot facility, state-of-the-art. We will have an emergency wildlife operations center, so we can direct all of the emergency spots throughout the state and possibly throughout the country for wildlife. So not just here in Texas. We'll be able to do that for, for the entire federal government. We'll be a 3,000 sea turtle facility. So we're going from a 1,500 to 3,000. Right now, we are the, the biggest capacity in the United States. We will certainly be that with 3,000. This is the exciting one. We will have the only wildlife CT scanner. So it's the only one in the state, and one of only about five in the country. So we'll be able to scan wildlife, but we're also doing research with College Station, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. So really building that, that, that workforce around wildlife. And then this is the exciting piece. We are the first manatee partner outside of the state of Florida. So when manatees strand, they'll come to the Texas State Aquarium outside of the state of Florida. Manatees are here. We think there's about seven in the area, because Florida's habitat's just crashing. Grasses are, are an issue, and so they are moving into Texas. So the aquarium will, will have manatees at some point, probably very, very, very soon. So I'm going to leave you with one last story. So the next slide is a North American river otter. This is an otter that was in intensive care. And that's why we end with it, for that response. This is Arthur.
Oh, look at him.
But what Arthur did was, it told a couple of stories. One, it captivates people, and we can talk about wildlife, and we can build that workforce around wildlife. This is Arthur a few weeks later. He was tired of us picking at his nose and everything else. But it, it shows the breadth of the program, how far this reaches, the, the possibilities behind it. But I think it also shows that if we give Texas wildlife a leg up, if we just give them a chance, the resiliency is there, the habitat is there, and we can make stories like this possible. We can continue to grow that wildlife rescue mission and really see a, a resilient habitat here in South Texas. So you are the first to publicly know that we are cutting the ribbon to the new Wildlife Rescue Center Thursday, March 2, and all of you are invited. So Save the Days will be coming out here very, very soon. This, again, is state-of-the-art. There's, this is, this is the only one like this in the country. There's no other comparison. There's no model. It's been difficult for us to even kind of understand how it's going to work just because of that. But we're excited. It's, it's a great day for the aquarium. It's a great day for Corpus Christi. I think most excitingly, it's a great day for wildlife in Texas. We're going to keep Texas wild, and that's what this building's going to do. So thank you for your time.
Wow.
I'll let you adjourn.
Jesse, thank you. This is amazing. But I've got to go back really quickly.
Go for it.
The big turtles, tell me again, how, what's happening with them?
We don't know. So they're stranding in large numbers. They are emaciated, so they're very underweight, and they're very dehydrated.
But you're finding them where?
Mata Gorda, or Mustang Island up to Mata Gorda, primarily in the St. Joe area.
So you don't really know?
We don't know.
They're just showing up?
They're just showing up. My concern now is with this front that we're getting today, there's a reinforcing front, I think, on Friday. The animals aren't moving out, and they're already compromised. So we, we might have, the, the stars are aligning for maybe a challenging winter for turtles, depending on how bad the fronts get. But this, this, this is probably one of the hardest wildlife things we've ever had to go through. You know, the cold stunnings, when we see 2,000 turtles, it's over in a week. We've had these animals since July. I will say, this is the first time the federal government's reimbursing us for the cost. So I think the program is getting that type of recognition. So it's a great event. I think we're all ready for them to move on. They're very ungrateful. If you watch the videos, they, they are very aggressive. But we're really thrilled that I think we're starting that precedent of getting reimbursed, either by the federal government or the state government.
I love it. And I think that this facility really, it, it's, it's a whole nother, I mean, it's an understatement to say it's a whole nother chapter, but it's really one that people, there's one thing to go and see, right? You go to the aquarium, you see the animals, but it's another to know the stories. And you're actually saving their little lives, or bringing them back, or just tending to them where no one else would.
Well, and I think, I, that's, I think the, the best point of all, and that's what's unique about South Texas. You're saying the aquarium, you could be out on the beach, you could see a cold-stunned sea turtle, you could bring it to the Texas State Aquarium, so an endangered species. This facility's free to the public, so you do not have to buy an aquarium ticket to go into this facility. You could go every day, watch that turtle's rehabilitation, and when we announce it, you could put it back in the Gulf of Mexico. That does not happen anywhere else in the country.
That's so awesome. It's wonderful. Thank you. I know we have a comment or two, but thank you for what you all do. Thank you.
It is a great team. I will say that. These guys, these guys make it happen.
Yeah. It's wonderful. Thank you. This is so exciting. This is very, very big for, for Corpus Christi, for the region.
I believe so. I really think it's a model for how coastal communities can operate.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you. And I want to echo that. Aquarium, you all are doing an absolutely terrific job with it. Now, on the Sea Life Center, that I think we had 3 million in the bond for the 20s, so the Port of Corpus Christi Sea Life Center, 3 million from the city of Corpus Christi.
Correct. That's correct.
Went into that. And, and I think that's really money very well spent. And the fact that you all are much more than an aquarium. And to your comments, how South Texas, we, we love our wildlife, we love our nature, we, we know we need to exist together on there. So Jesse, where are you on the oyster rehabilitation? Are you working with the Rochelle Foundation?
Well, so we have a great relationship with, with the Rochelle Foundation. There are some announcements coming between, the connection between this rescue center and the Rochelle Foundation. I think we're excited about, you kind of get into the nerdy science part of that, you know, restoring oysters is the same as keeping fish in an aquarium. So I think there's a, you know, a huge potential from a resilience piece, the coastal resilience part. There's the, the economic part of oysters, and oyster farming. And then, you know, what is the science research and workforce development? Yeah, there will be some announcements of that soon.
So we don't want to spill the pearls right now?
That's correct. But that's, so pearls, it's interesting you say that, CT scanner. So if you're going to look in at oyster for pearl, you've got to shuck the oyster. Now we don't have to. We can just send those oysters right through the CT scan, determine what's there, and we're done.
And we talked a little bit earlier about carbon capture, and what a lot of people don't know, an oyster shell is made out of calcium carbonate.
That's correct.
So it's about half-carbon. And if we build these massive reefs on there, we're going to be capturing a lot of carbon, which is really secondary. We know how beneficial an oyster reef is to our bays and our estuaries with it. So, you know, from creating new to taking care of what we have and, and helping, I, I can't say enough good things about all y'all's work.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that.
Uh, Councilman Pasley, do you have your light?
Yeah. I, I just want to say again, thank y'all very much, and, and thank you to your team. Thank you for patiently waiting while we discussed all of this very exciting information, I'm sure. But y'all do a great job, and, and I've been a member of the aquarium board for, and then I was termed out, and now I've been asked to come back.
Coming back on.
Yeah, coming back. So I'm looking forward to that. But I think this is great. Have, have y'all put radio transmitting devices on any of the turtles to see what their migratory?
So we're hoping to do that, I believe, next week is the plan. We have a, so that's all, it's, it's kind of intricate with the federal government. They own the satellite time, so there's some things there. But we do plan on, on tagging one of our released animals in the next week or so. We, I think Texas Sea Life Center, which is, which operates on the island, has just tagged three or four. We, that's why we're concerned about the winter. They're not leaving. And typically, they're supposed, they're supposed to go out. But yeah, we will tag it. There's not a lot known about what they do outside of Texas, so hopefully that kind of adds to that piece.
You got to teach them not to swim north.
Yeah, don't go to Boston. Don't, don't, don't go to Boston.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Great information.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, real quick, touching on what Councilman Smith said about the oysters, and I know you haven't announced anything yet, but is there anything that we can do as a city council? Do you need a resolution, a support, something that we can provide?
Around oysters?
Around oysters?
Not, not really, no. So what we've done is, the Rochelle Foundation has some plans. And, and because, probably one of the big things that we can do is move vast amounts of water very quickly. I would say that's a core competency of the aquariums. We're actually going to help them with water. So there's going, there truly is going to be a connection between the two. So everything's set and ready to go. It's just kind of as the, as that process moves forward on their end. So.
Well, I know their plans were to put some sort of facility there on North Beach.
That is correct. That's correct.
So in order, like a hatchery, similar to what they have further up north.
That's correct. So we will, we actually have laid the pipes in the new Wildlife Rescue Center to connect to that hatchery. So we will actually be able to move water to them. What I'm excited about from a, from a research standpoint is, once the oyster naturally fills with that water, we can take that water back and really see what the impacts are, in a good way, on wildlife. So I think we'll actually be able to not only demonstrate bay water quality, but we'll actually be able to, to truly do it in a lab setting as well. Yeah. Yeah, no, there's some really good stuff coming with that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
And actually, Gil, they are asking for a letter.
They are asking.
Um, I don't remember, but.
Someone's asking for it?
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea.
It's like we, yeah, write a letter. More, more than likely. I haven't seen anything, but it's coming. Yeah. Okay. So that concludes our non-marathon meeting. So, all right, that's it. Welcome to the meeting.